I'll call the meeting back to order, reopening it from our retreat earlier. And we'll start with the legal pieces for Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting, but it can be viewed live using the Zoom link that was provided on the agenda and also livestreamed on Channel 14. And then it'll be available on our school YouTube channel after that. Page two, sorry. And I also remind everyone that the meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. And remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the session to first notify me as chair, and I'll inform the public as required by the open meeting law. Do you have anybody who is going to be recording the meeting today? And I don't know if I can see that.
I'm looking now.
Because I don't think I actually see.
Don't see anybody, no.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll move into public comment. Please limit comments to two minutes per individual to items not on. Oh, I almost forgot. Lisa, thank you. Lisa, part us with our mission, please.
Okay, the Falmouth Public School mission is the Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. And our vision is the Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you. Now we'll go to public comment. Please leave, limit your comments to two minutes per individual to items that are not on the meeting agenda. There's no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or an individual may request something to be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Kelly, as a reminder, people need to raise their hand, and I will promote them to be able to talk if they would like to speak.
So, and I wish I could tell people exactly how to raise their hand, but I don't know how.
It's down at the bottom of their Zoom screen.
Thank you. So if you would like to make a comment, you're welcome to click on the bottom of the screen and raise your hand. And Lori, do we have anybody?
I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you so much.
Oh, wait, yeah. We do.
I actually can see it. Oh, I didn't think I had the ability to see that. Can we unmute Ms. Jazzo so she can make her comment?
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Jazzo, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank the committee for the decision they made last week. I know it was not an easy one, and it was not one that the seniors and families necessarily were happy about, but it made me as a teacher and as a parent more confident in the decisions that are going to be made coming up. And it just, although it was not a good, it was not good for the seniors, it made me feel more calm going into the next month of when decisions will be made.
Thank you so much. Anyone else have a public comment for us tonight?
I see no other hands.
Okay, thank you. If you can just keep an eye, that'd be great.
I will.
And so the first on our agenda is an update from Scott McGann. And so Ryan, if you could promote Scott so he can join us. And I'll wait till we can actually see him.
I think Ms. Jazzo also can go back into the attendees too, so I'm not sure how that works.
Ryan's on it, I'm sure. So, but basically what we were hoping, you know, we unexpectedly asked Scott to join us on Friday at the very last minute, and he was kind enough to do so. But we had put this on the agenda in recognizing that the school committee is going to hear about reopening plans, and it's hard to evaluate all of those pieces without having current information about COVID rates in Falmouth specific. And it's really hard to stay on top of that. So we asked him to join us tonight so that he can keep us, you know, in the loop, updated on what's going on in Falmouth and what our rates are like, so that the decisions that we have to make are more informed. There he is.
There he is.
Hi, Scott, thanks for joining us. I hope you don't have to jump back and forth between mics.
No, I'm on the, I'm on the assistant's office computer, which is, doesn't, doesn't make me do that. That was our last minute trying to put something together, not testing it. Well, as far as you asking me how we're doing, well, if we had this last week, I'd say that we were averaging less than five cases in a 14-day period. We were doing really well. Not to say we're not now. Citizens, a lot of hard work. Everybody's been following the guidance for the most part, and we were doing really well for quite some time. And, you know, I have said it, and I can't remember which meeting, because I've gone to a lot of meetings lately, you know, there's meetings, that, you know, there'd be an expected blip, especially with the quantity of visitors that we have, you know, people getting a little bit more relaxed with the social distancing that we're noticing, and going to phase three and allowing indoor dining and some other things, and indoor gatherings in a low number that, you know, maybe something would happen. And over the last week, we've had two issues. One, 15 cases in the long-term care, which comes from one person who comes to work and has that, and that's unfortunate. Doesn't really relate much to probably, you know, sort of the open, you know, the rest of us, general population, but it is a big, obviously, you guys have seen this and have paid attention, it's a huge deal because of the high mortality rate among long-term care. And then, you know, over the last week, we've had, if you, nothing, I have the TV on, you know what's been happening with the beaches. There's been a, an incident where there's been a lot of beach staff, namely lifeguards, that have tested positive over the last week. It's been a little difficult because, just as anybody who's listening, I just got off the call with the state, there's a place that's doing this rapid test, and this rapid test isn't considered actually a confirmed case. So it's somewhere in between an antibody test, which if you don't know, tests back a previous infection, tells you you might have been sick in February or March or April, and somewhere in between. And there's been a lot of issues with the accuracy in reporting and so forth. So what we've done is we offered today testing for any of the people that were involved to get tested on the town's dime over at the hospital. Luckily here in Falmouth, we have the Falmouth Hospital set up for testing, so we didn't have to do, you've heard the term pop-up testing. We don't need to do pop-up testing in Falmouth because we have a testing site, and we worked on getting them tested with the PCR test, which is the gold standard for test. So we've had, we've had our hiccup, and now I, we've been spending the day doing the contact tracing and notifications and things of that, because most of these cases are rolling in basically from about noon time Monday on, which is, you know, it's tough when, you know, the parent or the individual's getting their results on instantaneously on Saturday, but that company, and there's a delay in importation into the tracking system that we use with the VNA, because the VNA is only going to track what shows up on that Maven system. So we've had, you know, we had cases over the last week that we were not getting before. I wouldn't say it's unexpected, you know, expected a blip, just because things were just moving a lot more. You know, if you think of what Main Street looked like in May versus what Main Street looks like it now, and you think that you're going to eventually have something happen, and we have. And so our case count now is 228, where it was 208 last week. That does not count a lot of these antigen tests, because the state does not consider those to be a confirmed case. That's why I've asked if anybody's had those, if you're listening now, if you've had the antigen test, that the gold, to do the gold standard test. And I can see why parents did it, and our individuals do it. It's fast versus the delay that we've been having a little bit, a lot, quite a bit with the, with the turnaround on PCR tests, because the labs are overwhelmed with testing. You know, part of the thing is we want a lot of testing done, but it's hard to get labs to gear all the way up to be able to do it. You know, if you made a lab, and you average your business models to have 200 tests a day, and all of a sudden you're trying to do 2,000, it gets really difficult, so there gets to be a backlog. You know, I didn't want to get into specifics about the individual cases. We're still sort of sorting through it all. It does take a while when there's a lot of moving parts, and we're sort of weaving the web as we, as we're working today. VNA and I have been together a lot today, and so that's where we're kind of at. It's not great timing, because of course, I mean, as I drove around Saturday, I noticed there was a lot of catering tents and big tents and seats and things like that as I drove around. The timing couldn't, is probably not the greatest, because you've got those individuals that were in that each group that may also be attending a lot of those graduation parties. I won't know the effect of that for about a week or two, maybe less, as if we were using the PCR. The PCR, and I don't want, I mean, the, sorry, the antigen. And I won't say that the antigen isn't, is not inaccurate. It does a better job of telling you a positive. You know, sometimes some of these negatives end up being positives, which is good. It's usually fairly accurate once you're positive. It's just, you know, I've heard horror stories about it. We were talking about it today with other health agents on a call, so, you know, people, people being, people leaving the place after two hours and then getting called and told that they were positive, is basically somebody put it in the wrong box and gave it to the wrong patient. That's awful. We can't have that, because then you have, like, it just becomes a nightmare. So the state's working with them, I think, right now, because that's an issue. But so we've, we've got to get on the contact tracing, and that's what we've basically done all day today, doing that kind of stuff. That's all I really have. I mean, I really want to open up the questions, and I'm sure it's the questions that are going to get us to where we want to be.
No, that's really helpful, just to know, you know, to have it out in the open where we're at. So I just want to clarify, though, because I don't think I exactly understood that you said that the antigen test in Dennis, you know, is reliable, but then I heard you say something about someone getting the wrong results. So, you know, I just want to make sure that for all of our people who are attending, that it's clear to them.
What I meant by, what I meant by is the test itself has an accuracy. I've heard, what I was told by Dr. Katie Brown, who runs the Maven website, the epidemiologist at the state, is it's not as accurate, it's not the gold standard. It has some accuracy, especially on finding the positives. It tends to have a little more issues, not find, you know, if it's positive, it's there, but it's, it's the false negatives that you tend to get with it. The problem, I think, maybe at the place in Dennis, is in clerical error. For example, if Kelly, you and I are in line next to each other, I get frustrated and leave, and they put the positive of you in my back. You know, it's like taking an SAT test and leaving line number 63 open.
Sure.
On the answer sheet, going back and then having everything off by one. And I think they've had, having some issues, because I've had that from a couple different sources. And I don't want to, you know, they're doing a lot of testing, and I'm not saying it's a bad place. And we're not, it's kind of getting off into a tangent. I mean, the reality is there are positives resulting from, you know, events that have happened over the last week, and it's not, you know, it's not something we want to see. It's not something I would say is unexpected.
No, but as we're seeing them, I think we're going to see people more frantic for finding a good testing location that, that is not taking a week. And so I just want to make sure we're clear with everybody where to go, what to do. And, and now we, I think I've got it, and, you know, the goal, the best is to get the high-quality test, but for, you know, for some people, they, they need to know more immediately.
Yeah, because the frustrating part is you might be sitting home for three or four, you know, three days or so. It's usually an average of roughly three or four, you know, days to get your results. And since you're waiting, you know, you really shouldn't be out there, you know, you should be quarantining or reading your results. And that's frustrating. People want, I'm just letting people know that, that the accuracy isn't quite as the same as the gold standard that you have to wait for.
Fair enough. Does anybody have any questions that they want? I'm sure, I mean, we all have a million questions, and, and some of them are answerable, and some of them, I'm sure, are not.
I'll promise to do my best.
That's all we can ask. Leah, go for it.
Just a clarifying question. So last week it was 208, and now it's 228, so we have 20 new cases? Is that correct?
Right, that would include 11 or 12 from the nursing facility. That would also include, there's two events going on. So the nursing facility would count towards cases towards Falmouth.
Okay.
And there's been also a few randoms. So it's not just that. There are, we do average, we're still maintaining our average of three, four a week, or what I would call sort of not related to a particular event. So there's still some of that going on, and then some of those would be related to the beach.
Okay, and you had said that there were 15 cases in the long-term care, but some of them were counted last week?
Nope. Some people, okay, so if you're going for hip replacement, and you live in Bourne, and you still keep your Bourne address, that would be a Bourne case. If someone's been living there as a resident, then their address might be the nursing facility, that would be a Falmouth address. So the 15 cases, I think 11 of them count towards Falmouth, the other four, we count towards whatever residence that person lives in. Does that make sense? So don't get worked up on the numbers are the numbers. So I mean, it's, it's, it's an ever-changing paradigm. I mean, I could go back on the computer now, and the number might be slightly different from 228, right? So that does change.
So I guess my, my question is just bringing it to the schools. So the contact tracing, so you guys must be very busy right now with your contact tracing.
Overwhelmed, what's the word that goes above overwhelmed? Is there another word? You guys are all lit people, right? I don't know if that's a particular word, but yes, to answer your question.
So I guess my, my question is around contact tracing when, when we have school in session. Who, whose responsibility is that, and how does that work?
It's a perfect question, because this is, this is the difficult part, because, you know, my, my, my VNA contract is to take the Maven. So you guys are familiar what I mean when I say Maven. It's a dashboard. It's where all the diseases, probable suspects, you know, all go in, and that's where we put the notes. We share it with other municipalities, because not everybody's a Falmouth resident that might be here for the summer. The contact tracing that I'm talking about that's done by this department for those cases, however, the bigger issue is the self-reporting, and how we're going to mesh the self-reporting portion of it, because that's what you're going to see. You're going to see 90%. It's not going to be Scott telling me you have a case. It might be, right? It might be something like that, but you're going to get what we had like last week. You had self-reporting, but not in the system. So yeah, that needs to be, I'm hoping there's some guidance, because, you know, you've got problem, you know, it's, it's tough if, if, you know, it's not on my radar, and my radar is generally slightly more delayed, right? So the, the physi, if it's a PCR, it's really within the same day. I don't know how many hours it is from when somebody gets notified. It's really quick. But if we're going to get into the antigen stuff, it might take, right, there might be some of that delay, and that's, it's tough. I don't know, I don't have an answer for you on it. That make sense?
So, but, but that wouldn't be the school's responsibility for the contact tracing, right? That would be the VNA who would be doing that? We would.
On cases that have gone into Maven. But the VNA is not going to be contact tracing a kid calling, a mother calling out and saying their kid has COVID. The VNA, right, is not jumping on that, no. No, that's something that has to happen internally. Okay, so.
So the ones that go through the system will continue to be processed by?
Like any, any resident, absolutely, yeah.
Like the VNA. But self-reporting will not.
And the schools would be then responsible for that?
Well, yeah, I mean, how it would, for example, any, any call, let's, let's take the schools out of it. If I got a call right now that I would advise somebody who called me and said out of the blue, I've got COVID, I would give them the advice. The contact tracing from the VNA is going to come once that actually hits as a case. So it's almost going to have to be done, because if the parent's finding out a day before I'm finding out, you know, yeah, I mean, the VNA is not going to be jumping on those, no. Not until it comes through.
Leah, I don't want to leave you if you don't, if you didn't get an answer. Do you feel like you know what, what the answer is?
No. I feel like it's, I feel like that's going to be a lot on the schools. I mean, it, it is.
Well, it's going to be a lot on myself too, right? So Lori, if the school nurses are calling me six times a day with six different individuals in, in each school, you know, that's my time. My whole day's shot doing just school. So yeah, there's, there's some contact tracing, and you're going to get guidance that's going to tell you what to do. It's going to tell you if someone, if someone calls and says they have it, this is what you do, and you follow your guidance. And then ideally, how it's supposed to work is the contact tracing comes in once the case comes in. And ideally, if it's done by how it was set up as a framework aside, we'll figure out the antigen thing. I mean, I think we should give the states, the states on it. It should be happening within the same day. So my VNA should be calling the same day when it's imported, at the same time the parent goes, okay? So that's how it should happen. From a, from a labor standpoint, and how the health department's going to be able to help the school, I'm always here to help Lori and you guys and your nurses as much as possible. Am I concerned that that's going to be, yeah, there's some concern. We're going to have to figure out how we're going to be able to do this on a volume standpoint. It's the volume I'm concerned about.
And we're going to have to figure out all of that for all of this.
But you're going to follow your guidance. Your guidance is going to tell you what to do. You quarantine the class, or you send these people home. You're just going to keep following the guidance, okay? And that's what's going to tell you what to do. You know, your nurses aren't going to be calling up aunts and uncles that might have been there this week. That's the job of the VNA. Does that make sense? If I confuse, I'm sorry if I'm confused.
No, you're, you're fine.
I've been talking about COVID the last 48 hours.
So let's, Lisa, let's have your question, then, and then Melissa's question.
Great, thanks. And thank you, Scott, for everything that you're doing. I appreciate it. You had mentioned that there were, there's two separate incidences going on right now. One was the beach issue, and one is the nursing home. So the beach issue last week, could you tell me how many cases have come from the beach issue? And also, were those directly related to some of the graduating seniors, and in turn, why we had to, you know, obviously cancel graduation? I just want to see what that correlation is.
Well, I can't answer the question about the graduating seniors. I don't know the individuals that called and their names. I can tell you that the cases are related to a gathering that occurred amongst the lifeguards in an indoor, unmasked area. That's what, that's what our contact tracing's sort of working out, and that's what we're at. So is it related to what happened with the self-reporting that happened on Friday? Don't know. I don't have that information of what the self-reporting is. And quite frankly, it's behind us, and in far as I'm concerned, I'm off to the next, you know, going through and figuring out what happens, but, right. It most, it could definitely, look, some of this can easily have happened by one individual, and that can happen, right? So one individual goes to three different places, and it's sort of setting little fires off or big fires, and I, I mean, that could definitely happen, but we're still sort of sorted from that right now.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
So I feel like my question was answered when Leah said she didn't understand how the contract, how the contact tracing was going. But I guess, Scott, would it be helpful for maybe us as a committee to advocate for you to get additional help in the, in your office for the help, for the contact tracing? I'm just thinking about laying this at the feet of our school nurses, and we are, the school nurses already have so much going on, and now they'd be expected to do contact tracing as well. I'm more than happy to help advocate for that, but I just, what do you think?
The conversation needs to be had, and, you know, my, my problem now isn't volume, my problem is the intensity of the question, right? So I can't, it's, you know, to find somebody that does contact tracing, yeah, I'm actually looking at it from a separate school. I need it, I need it regardless of school or not. Perhaps, you know, thinking out loud, it would be nice, you know, you have your own physician, right? So you have a physician that you have on call. Perhaps having your own, you know, consultant that does the contact tracing, you know, would be the way to go. That way your nurse can just, you know, you leave sort of the health, the health department's going to do it once it hits Maven, and then you would have somebody internally that would be able to do it from a consultant standpoint. Whether it comes from this department or not, I mean, may be the way to go. I'm just thinking out loud. I don't know if that's the right answer, because Lori and I haven't even had, has, I don't think we've really had that conversation. I think initially, you know, you, you know, when this started early on, it would be me, but, you know, the volume is going to be hard just for me. I'm having a hard time enough just dealing with the general population, not, not, you know, the school per se.
Yeah.
Yeah, does that make sense? Would that, would that make sense? You might want to beef up what you're doing, would you, I forget the physician's name, you know, that you guys used.
It's Dr. Parkinson, and yes, that definitely clarified. Thank you. That was very clear. Thank you.
Andrea, did you have something?
Yes, I did. Scott, when we spoke on Friday, one of the issues was that the self-reported positive had not hit Maven, and so you didn't have access to that and weren't able to advise us based on that. So since that time, did that actually hit Maven? Have you come across that and been able to contact trace?
I can't answer that. That, to me, that would be a HIPAA violation, that individuals, if the individuals stopped watching. I really, I mean, I understand it would validate whether the decision was correct or not, but I don't really think I have the ability, it's, you know, to start saying, yeah, that person, that individual was positive or not, because it's going to get, you know.
That's fair. We don't want to, you know, even come close to reaching.
It was very, I mean, you know, see, public health is, is exempt in a lot of regards from HIPAA. Obviously, if I had a salmonella around break, I have to notify the restaurant owner, right, to tell the person you can't come in, so she can't come in. So, but in this sense, the, the event happened, it occurred, you know, I gave you the information I had at the time, and I know retroactively to say who was positive or not, I don't want to do that.
Right, I guess what I was trying to get at is that you were saying, you know, it might come at the day to dump at 2:30 in the morning, and I'm, I'm looking at this, the timing, right? Because there's obviously a major issue if we're going to be dealing with self-reported positives and then being able, being able to do something.
Right, you're going to, you're going to need to react to the self-reported. You're not going to wait for me to tell you a day and a half later, a day.
We can't.
No, you have to react. That's why you need, that's why I was concerned with, you know, you know, let's say we have a 15-year-old that's going to play a prank, I'm going to call out and say, yeah, I got COVID, click, right? So here's, right, so you're going to have to react to that. I mean, you're going to have to deal with that. So, yeah, so it's going to be the self-reported, because you're going to have to make the decision quickly and just go from there. And I, the guidance, I, you know, should be strong enough, and if it's not strong enough, I'm sure that question will get asked within six seconds of everybody reading, right? So the guidance should be clear. The guidance is clear, I mean, for example, the recreational camp for children, which is a big permit to get, and, you know, it's one, it takes me about a half a day to issue a recreational camp for children permit. The guidance for COVID is about 35 pages long, just how to do a rec camp. So I would think your guidance on this kind of stuff should be 50 pages of extreme detail. And yes, it's a lot for your nurses, so perhaps the consultant or your physician get together and figure out how you can enhance that. I'm always here, will never hang up on Lori, I promise you. But I can't take 15 calls a day if I'm doing 15 others, okay? So that's the only thing. I'll work with it, and if it's confusing, I, you know, I'm an extra, you know, an extra person on it, or, you know, something happens, I'm here to answer it. It's just, I was just getting afraid of being bogged down.
So that's, that's helpful, because I felt like that what you said about that we have to react to the self-reported seems different than the advice that we were being given on Friday. So now that I know going forward.
Right, and I'm learning too, because I'm also saying, okay, but, you know, my other advice on Friday was, I thought the event, when I thought through the event on Friday, I thought of it as somebody who was going to be there asymptomatic and spreading. Like, I kind of thought it through, like, I thought that's kind of was my advice, I think, regardless of what was going on with the questions. So my advice to you is we have a socially-distanced event for a reason. That was really what my advice was, and then the fact I didn't have it as a case. I wasn't saying because of, that's kind of what I was trying to say with that. Does that make sense to you? You know, I give you the best advice I can every day, and if I was wrong, if I'm wrong. I, at the beginning of this, I told Julian, the town manager, that I fully intend not to make every, every, every decision correct or not, so.
No, we're all doing this for the first time. So Lori, have we seen any of that guidance yet?
We have received the initial guidance. It basically tells us when, you know, we should have students stay home for, you know, 14 days, or, you know, parents making the decisions about staying home. And then the guidance does get into, you know, whether we should be closing classrooms or schools, or all the schools in the district, right? And there's, there's guidance. And there's, there's guidance. It does not get into specifics of telling us how, nor has there been any discussion that the, anyone within the school department would be doing contact tracing. So that's, that I am going to have to look into, you know, that's, that's a question because it is easy for, you know, DUCY to give guides and say, talk to your, your health agent. And is that even feasible with what Scott's, you know, describing? And especially if he can't respond to self-report. But when we thinks, uh, you know, self-report is credible, like we, we, we need to respond and respond immediately as though, you know, just as we did on Friday. Because we do believe it was credible.
And, and, and self-reporting, you know, the reason why I didn't get, I, I get a lot of false alarms and especially early on. You know, with the antigen, it's really thrown in because the self-report, because there's self-reporting and the, and the case coming in should be relatively the same time. So now we're finding that's not going to be likely in the future. So over the weekend, now that I've had to research the antigen trait, you know, and that kind of stuff, I have to rethink how I'm doing it. And yeah, I guess we're going to have to look at that. So there's the self-reporting part, you know? The other thing, the opposite's true, like a case could be, I need guidance from the state, right? I need the guidance to tell me that if somebody the age of 11 tests positive, you know, am I allowed to contact the school department to let you know that I have an 11-year-old positive? Because I don't know if the parent called you and told you and kept the kid out. Does that make sense? So the opposite's also, but I need that guidance and I need to know what it is. And I have found that the state is very good at giving me the guidance within about two hours of announcement or maybe even a day later. So I don't get it early enough to be able to really sit on it for a while and think about it. I hope it's different with the school, but you know, it's been, the guidance comes in really quickly to when these events start to occur.
So Scott, I really appreciate that, you know, not only are you thinking about this in an ever-evolving way, but that you're also thinking about how this is going to look for us and the realities of what it'll be like. And starting to think about that now will put us in a much better position when we actually get there. So I, you know, thank you for that. Um, did anybody else have any other, John, go ahead?
Yeah, Scott, while we have you, um, maybe you could help us with a little bit of a public service announcement. We have folks on and about the benefits of wearing a mask. If you have any stats that you can share with us, the powerful stats that might make an impact on the community.
Okay. So I, I get this magazine, which I recommend no one reads, it's the morbidity and mortality report from the CDC. Oh, you get that too. I fellow nerd. Um, there's an article that shows that in Missouri, and two asymptomatic hairdressers did over 125 patients and spread it to no one because they were wearing the mask. Okay, so there's also in other anecdotes, like this thing that they were wearing masks in Quincy, I think that someone brought up as well. So I mean, I, but most say that the virus, the masks and the distancing work. Not wearing the mask and one, one person, only took one, you can only take, you could take one person, it'd be 150 people get it, right? So it's the masks and the distance will keep, if it does spread, the numbers down, okay? That would be the biggest public service announcement because the last thing you want to do is go back to phase one. You guys all lived through phase one when the place was locked down, right? We don't want to go back to phase one, we don't want to go back to two. The state data is still showing only about 150 to 70 cases today. The metrics, the percent positivity went up from point, 1.7 to 1.9. That's a slightly concerning type of number, but you know, we got to keep it below two. We have to keep our R value down below one, which means the disease is not increasing. And to do that is the masks and the distancing and being disciplined, okay? And I think what's happened is, you know, I've been given reports, if you guys see it on FCTV, and I'm saying things are good and they are, and they're good. And I'm not going to lie to you, I'm telling you that I look real, I'm like, I can't believe I didn't have a case that I couldn't tell you exactly where it came from, like a, a sibling type of thing. Or for like two, three weeks, I'm like, this is great. It doesn't last, right? And it's because we've kind of probably loosened up a bit, especially in the age brackets of the teens to twenties. I'm a father of two high school kids, you know, and I can see myself, go ahead, you guys can go there, go ahead and go, you know, there. It's just because the poor kids have been locked down since March and it's not good for them. I think you all agree with that. It's not good for them, right? And so we've relaxed a little bit and plus we've imported people from other places, right? We have new guidance on travel. Um, visiting is an issue. I mean, there's, you know, Dr. Say it's not an issue. And so, um, my public service announcement is follow the guidance, no big parties. Let's just, you know, stay in small groups. We can manage small groups. You know, this could blow up to be a lot of cases or it could do nothing. Hopefully that contact tracing is effective.
Thank you.
And you know what the problem with contact tracing is? It's only as good as the information provided us. So if John, if you hang up on me, when you hear a case and you hang up on me, and I've had that happen, I'm not getting anything from that.
Um, Melissa, do you have another question?
I have a question. I just want to piggyback on Scott's excellent public service and thank you, John, for bringing that up. But I would be remiss if I didn't mention that you should wear your mask over your nose and your mouth. Because this doesn't do anything.
Melissa, that's my number one complaint. My number one complaint from the public is you need to go to X place and check on them because they have the mask under their chin. It's my number, well, each is bike path and that would be my top three complaints.
Yes. So thank you. And I.
Should be all three orifices. All three orifices should, you know, your nose and your two nostrils need to be covered with a mask.
Um, Scott, I had one last question for you and I don't know if you'll have an answer, but I'll at least throw it out there. So I know that there was, um, testing provided for the beach department and that it's sort of like an, not only is it paid for, which is so important, but also it's sort of an expedited system to make sure that you got those results timely. And those are the test results that, you know, are the best ones by your own, you know, comment. So I'm wondering also if we can plan for having something similar should we need it for the schools? Is that something that you foresee as a possibility? If we, if we have these events that we know there might be spread, that we can try to target and get people tested quickly and, you know, get it, um, you know, held off at bay.
So Rep, Rep Fernandez and Suma Rand, they've said it, I guess, she's, um, they've secured some money for, um, testing. And one of the things we're thinking about, we're very lucky on the Cape. We have a county health department. No other county has a health department. I don't know if you know that. It's a lot easier being a health agent, being able to kick it up to a county. But we're thinking about having like a rapid response team, but that's down the line. Cause right now the supplies are running low on some of these type of tests. So it's really going to be vetted through. It may not happen right away. Right now, yeah, we could, could secure it. So I mean, we could, how we set this up was real simple. There's a, there's a number to call Cape Cod Healthcare. It's a general number. We've made arrangements that they blocked out some time and they bought, made appointments for them and bill it to the town of Falmouth. So that might be the simplest system. Um, the rapid response might work as well. It's sort of like, that's what we call pop-up. It's in the works. Right now we're lucky. We have a test site right down the street. So I mean, they can ramp that up if they had to. You know, unfortunately right now we're running low, they're running a little low on some of the supplies. Like a pipette that comes from Switzerland's on back order until, you know, November and all that stuff. So you have that kind of issue, but, and it's, so what I'm saying is it may be different. You know, we might have to adapt differently based on what's going on with supplies and so forth and testing. But we need, yeah, yeah. My, my idea was if we needed to test, if you're asking me, do we need to test the classroom and test the classroom quick and we get it done? Yeah.
That's what I wanted.
If you ask me if to test the entire high school in an hour and a half, the answer would be not at this.
That's a no for, for everything, but, um, can't get, can't get a whole class from a high school, gets to do anything except get on their phone and, and, uh, yeah. So, um, okay, that, that totally answers my question. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um, any last questions for Scott before we let him get back to his eight million other things that he's trying to do right now? All right. Thank you so much. Thanks for joining us last Friday. Thanks for joining us again today. I learned a lot. That was really informative and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott.
Take care. Um, so we're going to go right into, um, the preliminary reopening plan, which is a perfect segue. Scott was a perfect segue to this, so I'll turn it over to Lori.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to focus on the presentation that I just brought up and, I assume everyone can see my screen.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So, um, I'm going to be reiterating some of the things that Scott actually said. So. All right. So, um, we've already mentioned our mission and vision. I just want to say that, you know, at all times and every decision we make, um, that we refer back to our mission and vision. I just want to go over the core values and even during our planning for COVID, we definitely want to empower students to find joy in their learning. And it does drive many of our decisions, embrace each other's differences and cultivate community. And, um, yes, that looks a bit different now, but it is still at the forefront. And encourage a life of growth and wellness. Um, I think that all three, that's so important right now. Um, and we keep that, um, in, in mind at all times. So, um, the preliminary opening or the preliminary plan, which is I'm going to discuss tonight. And I just want to reiterate that, um, what I'm presenting tonight could change based on, um, the current state of COVID. You know, Scott just talked about that. Things can change, you know, rapidly. He said in two weeks, um, he'll know more about the fallout of, um, you know, the beach parties, uh, graduation parties, um, anything else that may have, you know, parties that's been going around in town. So things change very quickly and we always have to keep that in mind. But also we're constantly getting, um, input from, um, our, um, reopening committees, um, from, you know, families. You know, so we're, there's a lot of input and we're certainly going to be getting input from the school committee as well on the plan. And so, um, this is something that we're starting with and, uh, and then certainly it could change again, uh, the next time we're together. So, uh, July 28th, this is the presentation. Um, July 31st, uh, a preliminary plan is submitted to DUCY. That preliminary plan includes, um, uh, the, uh, basically the, um, you know, tests that the principals were actually, um, whether, you know, how, how many students we can get in, in, uh, at what type of distances? And we have to submit that to, uh, to the state on Friday. So it's really around the models, um, and some of the challenges that we're actually seeing. August 4th, uh, we're having a family forum. And, uh, between now and August, before August 6th, um, I'll be meeting with, uh, school teams and, um, getting input as well. Again, our principals, I have to say, we have a, um, the principals are running school-based reopening teams at every building. Uh, and so I will also be joining them so that they can, um, you know, share their concerns, their plans. And then on August 6th, um, we need the school committee to take a vote, um, to approve a plan before it's actually due on August 10th. Uh, and that's the comprehensive plan. Tonight, you're going to see a lot of the pieces that go, actually go into the comprehensive plan as well. But I should say, um, even after August 10th, um, we will continue to, uh, listen to the scientists, the research, the state of the COVID, um, we will continue to tweak our plans and get input. So even after there is a plan submitted, um, the plans could still, um, change. I think that's important to note. All right. So the health and safety, um, and this is the piece, I'm, I'm going to do my own public service announcement. If we have any chance of giving, getting our students in person in school, people do need to be disciplined. And we need to do the rigorous, um, hand washing, we need to wear masks, uh, face coverings. And thank you, Melissa, they need to go over the nose and mouth. We need to physical distance ourselves and, um, that reducing the interaction that Scott talked about, you know, between groups, but if you're going to be with, uh, with other people in groups, please wear the mask and distance when you're in groups. Uh, and then certainly stay home when sick. And, uh, all of these apply when we get back in school. All of this is going to be, uh, important to continue to follow, uh, because it is what keeps us safe. So the mass students in grades, um, two through 12 are required to wear a mask or a face covering that covers their nose and mouth. Students in grades pre-K to one are encouraged to wear a mask, face covering or shield. Adults are required to wear mask, face coverings at all times. There will, um, and then on the bus, everyone, including our pre-K to one students on the bus will be required to wear a mask. And then, uh, there will be exceptions to the mask, um, and face coverings, uh, based on, um, you know, documentation from a health provider. And we will have specific documentation that will, um, that will give, uh, out to families, uh, to our staff on, um, what, what will be needed. Our consulting physician, um, has worked on the documentation and we will have something, um, that will, uh, cover if, um, someone can't wear a mask. So the schools will provide one cloth mask to each student. DUCY guidance had indicated that the families are responsible for that. But we definitely want to be able to provide, uh, one for everyone. There will, you know, if we can do more, we, we will try to do more as far as a cloth mask. But we will have extra disposable face masks in case, in case a student needs an additional one during the day. For a variety of reasons that might be, but we have plenty, um, on hand. So we've made orders and they are here. I believe the last number that, um, Patrick has used would be the number of 40,000 at this time. So, um, we are collecting our disposable face masks. Nurses, um, uh, needing, uh, will have specialized, um, personal protective equipment, including gloves, gowns, face shields, the contactless thermometers. I mean, they'll have all of that. But we also will have a specialized PPE for, uh, available to staff and students that have underlying conditions, who are at higher risk of contacting, um, COVID-19. Um, and any, uh, staff and students that have to be, um, within three feet, um, you know, to, order to approve, um, to receive their appropriate instruction. Distancing in the classroom settings, um, when all parties are wearing masks, a minimum of three feet of separation is required. And if we're not wearing the mask, six feet is required. But that, I, uh, I know that may sound confusing, but students grades two up will be wearing the mask even when they're six feet apart when we're inside. That we actually refers to if we are able to take a, a mask break. And we are, um, following the guidance and we are working out schedules so that students can take mask breaks during the day, multiple times during the day. Sometimes they'll be inside, they will be brief mask breaks if they're inside. If they're outdoors, uh, we'll have longer mask breaks. And, um, at six feet apart, um, we'll be able to achieve that outside. Preschool kindergarten, first grade students without mask, um, cannot be less than three feet apart. We're aiming for a physical distance of six feet, uh, when it, uh, at all feasible. And, uh, when students are walking in hallways, eating lunch and while taking mask breaks, they will remain at six feet apart. Most classrooms can accommodate, um, four to six feet of distance. We are, um, you know, seat to seat, um, as in the guidance, we are pretty much, uh, five or six feet of, of distance between students. Desk will face forward in the same direction. All students will have an assigned desk. Uh, or seat, uh, seats will be assigned in classrooms during meals and on the bus. We're able to achieve, um, cohorts of students, um, in pre-K through eight, um, that will remain together throughout the day. And, um, for, for various reasons, in all grades, uh, students will have, uh, multiple teachers. You know, we still have reading teachers and, uh, our special education teachers, um, that may, um, push into the classroom to provide services or students within a cohort may, um, be pulled out to work together. But no, but the cohorts will not be mixing. At the high school, um, students will, we're, uh, students will, uh, move classes. So, um, they will not be able to achieve the cohorts because of the number of, um, class choices, um, that students have at the high school. And this is true across the state of, you know, at high, this is just because high schools are just, uh, different. Um, and we're creating one-way directional hallways, um, whenever possible. Just the hand hygiene, uh, remember mask, stay the distance and we have to wash our hands or sanitize often. You know, so we will frequently through the day, but definitely entering the building before and after meals, before and after removing masks and before leaving the building are required. But we will be frequently having the hands washed or sanitized all through the, through the day. And it's that, you know, when you're washing or hand sanitizing, it should be 20 seconds. So we, uh, the nurses are creating, um, learning modules for our, uh, staff and students. To, so we will be putting them through the training, uh, on all of this and reinforcing on, um, multiple times during the day. Every classroom will have, um, direct access to either hot water sink or a hands-free sanitizer station. And then we have, um, mini, uh, hand sanitizers, uh, dispensers, uh, installed, um, in the high traffic areas across the schools. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Patrick, um, and he'll talk to us about facilities and operations.
Thank you. So until the slide changes, I'm going to reiterate a message that you've heard already. Wearing a mask, um, washing your hands and keeping a few feet apart, uh, that does, goes a long way to preventing the spread of this. Uh, there are fewer if, or no instances that are known that it, um, the virus is transferred via surfaces. That said, schools, uh, and school custodial staff are, uh, have already had and already have, uh, good practices in trying to prevent, uh, viruses from spreading in a, in a school. Cold and flu season shows up every year and we know how to, uh, deal with that. So, um, our staff, uh, really do understand what we're, uh, what we're doing here in terms of, uh, cleaning and hygiene. We have our existing staff. We are also committing to adding staff, uh, custodial staff, uh, on a, on a temporary substitute basis or temporary basis to our schools. If we can find folks who are interested in being custodial subs, we would ask them to apply to the school district. That we would, uh, like to onboard them as soon as possible. If that does not happen, our staff, um, are, do have the capacity to take on, uh, additional hours, uh, and our staff. So we will be adding staff, especially to the day shift, uh, to help with ongoing cleaning needs and scheduling that throughout the, the school. The supplies that, uh, schools used are regulated. There, there need to be considered green, uh, supplies in terms of, uh, so that is, uh, always at the top of mind. There are, um, uh, what's called disinfected sprayers, electric static disinfected. what's called disinfected sprayers, electric static disinfected sprayers that the world is buying. We have ordered those and those would help us to, at the end of a normal cleaning session in the evening, to spray down areas. And it's a way to get hard-to-reach areas and, and underneath areas that you might not normally get. So those are, those pieces of equipment are on order and are expected to show up in August. As I mentioned, thorough cleaning and disinfecting of our schools will be happening at the end of the day like, like is normal, but we'll also have, have staff who will be doing it in a scheduled way throughout the day. So an example of that would be just sort of, children are coming into the building. We understand that regardless of what we say, they may be touching surface. So, so we'll be wiping down those surfaces. The custodial staff may go and sort of re-clean bathrooms if, if they need to be cleaned after children use them in, in the morning. They'll go to the food service area, wherever that might be, and help with the cleaning during the lunch period. At the end of the day, they'll be cleaning other areas during the day. That may be high-traffic area. Children leave, then the evening crew comes on and does the thorough cleaning of every room. So, so the, the scheduling and planning for how the custodial staff will sort of operate through the buildings is, is in process and it'll be a very scheduled manner on how we handle these things. I'm not sure there's anything else on that other than to comment. There are, will be protocols on how areas are handled if, if a COVID positive case has, has shown up. Ventilation has been a, has been a good question that we've all done a lot of research on. And it is understood that fresh air and ventilation throughout our buildings is, is a good practice. Windows can be open and will be open as weather permits and, and in the classroom teacher's desire. The building univents will be open to allow maximum airflow. We are in good shape in terms of our, our univan systems throughout the district relative to other districts. We have relatively new systems. So the, the Lawrence, East Falmouth and T Ticket univent and, and heating systems are, have been totally replaced and updated within the last two or three years. The Morse Pond Boiler is a brand-new boiler. The, that leaves the Mullen Hall, North Falmouth and Falmouth High School. Their systems are 10 to 16 years old, which relatively speaking are brand-new. So we're in good shape with those systems. The sort of new learning that we've had is that the recommendation for schools tends to be to have the filtering systems within the, within these univents to be a filter that is what's called a MERV rating of seven or eight. That's the typical recommendation for, for school buildings. Orders have been placed for filters with a MERV rating of 13 as means of providing improved air quality. The, we're, we're sizing those out across the district and we'll bring those in. I think the, the only caution there is that, that we, we want to test them in our systems and make sure that they're working fine. The recommendation is that they will be fine. My only caution is that sometimes new systems like that or new filters like that, you might feel like they're doing too good of a job. And, and the, the perception might be that, that things are, are stuffier. That, that was the only caution that I read about when, when researching this, this. But I'm, I'm really pretty optimistic about upgrading those filters across our, our district.
Thank you, Patrick. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Tellier now. And I
Thank you. Okay, so I would like to speak a little bit to teaching and learning. And I have invited two colleagues to join me as well this evening as we go through this part of our presentation. I'm ready to advance. I'm unable to advance myself.
I think you have both of announced, Sonia.
Yes, I, I just want to, I would like to go to the next slide, please. Sorry. Thank you. So as we have come through this journey, I want to express my appreciation for members of the Tech for Learning Steering Committee as well as the members of the inaugural cohort for the Graduate Certificate for Teaching in the Virtual Environment through Bridgewater State. Together with both of those groups, we've been able to curate a rich complement of learning tools, digital tools, apps, programs and resources for our students and families to use during being connected and really to advance our teaching and learning program. The resources have allowed us to remain very optimistic about moving forward and being able to plan instruction that allows us to align with Desi's plan for a full curriculum in the upcoming year. At least at present, that's what their guidance indicates. And then attendance and grades will be expected across our models. And so the three models that are required in the guidance are in-person learning, the hybrid, which is a alternating instruction between in-person or face-to-face instruction and remote learning. And finally, full remote learning, which is situated in a setting other than the school. By and large, we understand that in the spring that was situated in students' homes, we understand as need for childcare and arrangements have changed, that could be situated in a relative's home or elsewhere. But students and teachers both have the technology to be able to support that arrangement. So all three of these will be touched on. The purposeful design across the three models is to maintain forward progress in students' education and to have the ability to be responsive to the health concerns and what that does to guidance and our need to change how we manage school operations. So this spring, we had to be largely reactive and building from the lessons that we've had as well as the professional learning in which we're engaged. We're able to use the tools and applications about which we've been learning and about, and with which we've been practicing to not only engage asynchronously, but also to be able to gauge synchronously or in a live session to help mirror more of the in-class instruction or in-class design. So we're using playlists, which our two teachers who are going to be joining us momentarily will be able to speak to, which provides students' choice in their learning as well as digital applications like EdPuzzle, Padlet and Cami to support our asynchronous learning, which is, you know, allowing students to learn at various times, but to be consistently contributing towards shared outcomes or goals. And then also being able to increase their ability for personalization. So just to better distinguish between synchronous and asynchronous, synchronous learning is more of the idea of live instruction or real-time shared among the learners in the classroom and can be used across all three models. Really, we think of it exclusively with in-person, but there are ways that we can use it in live instruction. And Zoom and Google Meet are two platforms that have helped us to be able to, to do that and to engage. So the example here is a live webinar or a live lesson and students using one of those platforms to be together, either in whole group or in small group. And then the asynchronous allows the learner to have control over the time and place of the learning. Again, achievable through all three models and increases personalization. So this would have, in this example, access to a recorded lesson, a recording of the webinar in the first example that could be played on demand and could be repeatedly played to support learning. So in the delivery of instruction.
Sorry, it's very sensitive.
In the delivery of instruction, I want to first just remind, especially for some of our families who have had their Chromebooks since March, that with the Chromebook being the instrument of learning that at any point in time, an email to CB, short for Chromebook, allows students and families to make contact with members of our IT team in order to support any needs they may have or to get questions answered if you've hit an obstacle. Google Classroom is going to be used as a learning management system for kindergarten to grade six. Google Classroom is also being used in pre K in a slightly different way. We're going to talk about that in a second. And then School G at grades seven through 12. And that's something about which we've spoken at previous meetings, but those are the two platforms that over time, there'd be a tiered transfer or transition to bring everyone into School G. In terms of accountability, student attendance will be taken daily at each class meeting. And this is one of the things that the school-based teams are able to walk through and hone in what their practice would look like. But one example that's come up in conversation, it, knowing that attendance is, is pretty clear-cut when, when students are together for in-person learning, but in the remote world, was to talk about students just being able to identify themselves in the chat as, as being present by simply putting in a hello or moving some part of the instruction into a discussion board. And the student's response allows you to know they're there. If you're not in a, a face-to-face format like a Zoom or a Google Meet, but attendance is going to be required for any synchronous or live instruction done outside of the classroom, then obviously will be taken when students are in person in a manner consistent with attendance as it was previously taken. And as we get closer to the school year and each school is able to refine its plan, their schedule for instruction will be able to be released to students and families. So just to make a connection and to set the stage a bit for the, the two colleagues who'll be speaking, Google Classroom is going to start at pre K. And we've been doing some professional learning and working with our pre K team to identify the best use of this platform and to start some sense of awareness for early learners, but really to use it as a communication and a single access point to information for families. And so working with Cindy Tugis, we've been able to adjust how we approach Google Classroom and to simplify it. And we're continuing to refine our plans for Google Classroom with our earliest learners. For kindergarten through grade six, starting with the two days of professional learning that we did in June, we've been focusing in on a consistent foundation so that everyone's Google Classroom comes from a common structure and then is able to be personalized as students gain facility. And then similarly, starting off with a template or a couple of variations of templates, bringing material into School G, we're in a similar place. So working with our teams at, at both the elementary and the secondary levels, very much through teacher leadership in understanding and introducing these two platforms, we're going to be creating, actually, some of the video series is, is done. But we're going to be creating video libraries that offer tutorials how to access simple troubleshooting navigation. The ones for Google Classroom will certainly be accessible to our students, but are truly oriented as well for families to be able to support students in the navigation. And at this, at the secondary level, focusing in on School G, oriented a little bit more towards the student-first, but certainly accessible to families to offer support. So we get into talking about the professional learning. One of the things that comes up as a, as a tool for us is landing pages. So Ms. Amy Turner at North Falmouth, who teaches grade one, offered to allow us to share the visual. So her students will come to her landing page prior to entering her Google Classroom. And from this landing page, they're able to click on, in the bookcase, the pictures. So on her bookshelf in the upper left, if students clicked on that icon, they'd go to her Google Classroom. Or they clicked on the icon next to it, they could go into Google Meet. So it gives them opportunities to come to this one place and be familiar and to see, obviously in caricature form, a bit emoji of Ms. Turner. So they'll constantly come here to work, but then they'll be able to go to the bookshelf and access programs and apps that they regularly use. And then if they click on the red M, the Gmail icon, they'll be able to email Ms. Turner. And then over time, you can see in the middle where it says current playlist and previous playlist, she'll be able to link the current week's assignments as well as maintain an archive of previous week's assignments. Even though they'll live in Google Classroom, this is a quick reference tool, especially for families as they can't participate as students in the Google Classroom. Carrying on with this, and I'd like to invite the first of our colleagues to speak. Ms. Krista Hennessy has her landing page for her grade seven English classroom.
Hi, Krista. Thanks for inviting me. So we're having a lot of fun with the bit emojis, as you can tell, making pictures of ourselves. So this has been a nice little way to, from our, the work that we're doing right now in modern teacher to come up with a consistent way to allow students and parents to have access to what's going on all the time because it's, I think it's hard. One of the things that we learned in the spring was it was really hard for the parents to figure out how to use Google Classroom. The kids were fairly familiar with it in seventh grade, but the parents weren't. And so when anybody needed help, there wasn't, and everyone was too stressed out. You know, it was just, they didn't, they never have to use it. There's no reason why they had to be masters of it. So this has been kind of a fun thing. And what my plan is, or, and this was suggested by my science teacher on my team, I don't know if everybody knows, but in Lawrence, we, we teach in teams. We'll, we'll have a team landing page so that parents will be able to access all the team teachers. And with, because a lot of this information is general. And so they'll be able to have a one-stop kind of shopping. And we, as our specialists rotate in and out with us, they'll be on our team page also. When we were in the spring, did you want me to talk about this, Sonia, in the spring? In the, in the springtime, when we were, we went into remote learning quite so suddenly. We, of course, didn't have any of this stuff. But, so we, as a team, we met, we immediately learned how to use Zoom and we started meeting pretty frequently and we came up with a calendar. But it wasn't nearly as enjoyable to look at, believe me. But then there was links to it, to Google Classroom, to the availability of, of assignments. And then, but, but each one had a different style. And I think that this will, this will be better because it has, it's a more uniform kind of a way to approach it. And I think that that will help parents, it will help students to have a regularity to it. Even though there'll be different assignments on the School G page when they get there, at least they'll know how to access everything.
Thank you very much, Krista.
You're welcome.
And Tricia is also here to talk about her landing page and her experience from the perspective of her high school classroom.
So thank you again for having me today. It's been kind of a pleasure for me to learn how to go from teaching in a traditional classroom and being able to continue to engage my students throughout this remote learning process. And as many have said, this spring was not the remote experience that everyone initially was hoping for, but we as teachers began to grow and better understand how to personalize instruction, help our students and kind of meet them where they are. And so in front of you, you can see my landing page. But you can also see kind of some of the features as, as we grow and helping our students all kind of start in the same place and providing them the resources that they need. And then from there, allowing them to branch off and learn a little bit more about the topics that they're interested in. And so the idea of playlists that allow students to enter where they are and to learn a little bit more about what the expectations are and to be consistent and allow students who may be synchronously involved in your class because of Zoom or may not be there for some reason, the access to the same information, no matter where they are. And that's been a huge part of this kind of transition for us is learning to teach students, all students, where they are, personalizing it. And in the, in the spring, we were very much just learning and we are still learning. But now we have structured things like learning pages. we have structure, things like learning pages, we have playlists, we have things that allow our students to kind of understand what the structures are, what the different things are, and so, thank you for changing the page. So, a playlist basically allows our students to kind of learn about what the expectations are. And to speak for myself, in the spring, I was on the blue playlist. I was very systematic, I could tell my kids what to do Monday through Friday, I could give them a few choices, and now I've worked my way towards the green playlist, where my students can have choices as to how they're learning, where they're learning it, how they're practicing it, and how I assess them. And I'm a math teacher, and as a math teacher, you know, even just the course for me, switching from our traditional classroom to remote learning, allowed me to see that there's other ways that I can educate my kids, there's other ways I can assess them, and I can truly give them more than just the traditional experience that I'm used to giving them in the classroom. And so, there are some really positive things about remote learning, and all of these things will allow us, whether our students are hybrid, whether they're in-person, or whether they're remote, whether we have to be six feet apart, or whether we're beside them, for all students to have equal access to this information. And that's really important about these transition plans, is that we have a plan that'll work, whether a student is in front of us or not, whether we have to switch like we did in the spring on a moment's notice. And that's what some of these changes in all these different facilities are allowing us to do, which is critical.
Thank you, Tricia. And I invited both Krista and Tricia to join us. They are both participating in the inaugural cohort for teaching in the virtual environment, so they've completed half of their courses, and they're also both participating in the Modern Teacher PD that's being offered this summer in partnership with the Cape Cod Collaborative. And through that work, they're also engaging themselves in both the synchronous and the asynchronous instruction, to be able to pull this together, and to have that experience as a learner, as well as to plan for it as a teacher. So, thank you, Krista and Tricia, both for joining us, and thank you, Dr. Dorr, for allowing us to share how our planning is going to help inform the reopening plan.
Absolutely, and thank you, and thank you, Krista. And Tricia, can you hang out with us for a little longer? There may be some questions. I don't know, Kelly, I'm going to defer to you. Do you, around the teaching and learning, do you want to take questions just about this section, or would you want to wait till the end for all questions?
Let's deal with teaching and learning first, so that our teachers aren't hanging out with us through things that they might not want to be, especially since they're on screen, I know how people love that. So, and I apologize, but it's going to take me a minute, because I have to scroll back and forth to look at you, to see who has a question. So, does anybody have questions for Sonia, John, and then Melissa?
I just have a comment. First, hi, Ms. Hennessy. Just as a parent, I mean, I did like a, you know, touchdown signal when you had the previous projects or assignments, I mean, that's fantastic, and having the playlist, because so much of it is, all right, retrieving this one was from this week, and then as soon as, you know, you live in fear of like, okay, wait, it turned over to the next week. And now, where are those ones that, we were this close to finishing those. So, having them like itemized in different pockets and everything is just fantastic. So, thank you, that was my only comment.
Melissa, go ahead.
This is a question for Sonia and Ms. Hennessy. How long does it take to develop just one of those playlists or a template, or?
Well, for the neophyte, it takes a long time, but you do get a rhythm to it. And I've been working with my seventh-grade English fellow English teachers, and we are going through all our normal curriculum, and we are just figuring out how to teach it in a different way, and how to let kids have access to it. Where do we have to make a video? What, how can we engage this, use this digital tool instead of a paper, or pen and paper? So, that's been really actually kind of fun, because it is part of the, I think as Tricia said, it's like part of what we need to be doing is engaging kids in their learning so much more differently, but also to make them more responsible for what they're learning, but by giving them choices as to how they access the learning, and how they report their learning. So, in other words, and how they might have an assessment, it allows them to be more invested in their learning. So, that has actually been fun, but it does take a while to kind of, to make sure you have enough tools to be always on, sort of on the lookout for something that you might try to allow choice.
Well, it certainly sounds like a lot of work, I'm glad that you're enjoying it, and I'm sure that.
Sometimes.
Yeah. And I just want to thank everyone that's doing their part in the process of this, and the creating of the templates throughout the K to 12, because I know that this is crazy, and it real, like, I just, I appreciate how much work it is, and how much time it takes, and this is not, you know, a year ago, we weren't even ever thinking of this. So, thank you to all of you, to everyone who's setting these up, and the time, because I'm sure it's been a lot.
Thanks, you're welcome.
I'm going to jump in there, because I'm not sure that I understand the playlists. So, like, what would, what would a student see, for example, in the beginning template, or in the intermediate template? I'm not sure I understand what go, what would go in there.
So, I think there might be a link to Tricia or my playlist, that you think we could walk you through it. I don't know if you can.
Where's the link?
If you go back to one more page forward, so go back to where my landing page was, if you click on my landing page.
Okay.
There should be a link there that just takes you to my actual landing page, so if you just click on it, it should just go.
Oh, okay, great.
And then, if you scroll down a little bit, keep going. There is, so I can show you the summer work, if you click on Module 1. Let's hope it works, there we go. Yep. So, basically, what it's going to do is, it takes the students to a breakdown of what the expectation is, and then.
Sorry, sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm going to have to go through this, because I clicked on, okay, good.
If you, so if she scrolls down a little bit more, it shows you what the expectation is, and then all the different ways that a kid can learn about it. So, particularly for summer work, there's this idea that I want you to watch a couple of videos, I want you to read some articles, to get an idea of what statistics is, because before you roll into this world, I want you to know what you're about to learn about. And then, I've given you a series of questions, and then I've given you a series of ways to share your learning with me. So, you don't have to necessarily just write a discussion post, you can make a video, you can curate some images and share with me the top 10 things that you see in statistics. Another activity is to read a book, and then to find items in the book that are history repeating itself today, and share with me how history today is doing what it did 50, 60, 100 years ago. And so, it's providing the kids with more methods of assessment, as well as direct links, though, to the video I want them to watch, and the article that I want them to read, providing them some extra information.
That was very helpful, thank you. Now I get.
You're welcome.
Very much.
It takes a little while to learn, to figure it out, takes some time.
Question. Everything, when we have new terminology, just wrapping our head around what that actually means.
Question on the summer assignments.
Go for it.
How long have they been involved with the summer assignments, and how, what is the timeline on it?
So, for AP students, they basically have the entire summer to do a summer assignment if a teacher chose to assign one. So, they've had it since June, and they will have until the first week we go back in school to do it.
And your correspondent was with them as, how often?
So, over the summer, the first thing that's a summer assignment is where the kids get a video from me that explains each module and what the expectation is, and then I will correspond with them as often as they'd like. So, if they want to email me, most of the time, I don't really get much until about two weeks before school starts.
Yeah.
It's designed, truthfully, it's just designed to, for me, it's designed for, to get them thinking. I'm not looking for you to learn content without me, I'm looking for you to think, and to apply information in a different way. And that's the whole idea of this switching when you're doing remote learning, is it's, we think of math as like, I stand in front of you, and I provide you direct instruction. And I think of math as in, I provide you some information, I give you a little bit of a challenge, and then I help you work through your struggles, but I want you to be able to see it and apply it. And so, that's what playlists in general, but specifically this playlist, it allows the kids to see what's going on.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on teaching and learning?
Do you want to jump in, Cal?
I'm trying to like scroll through everyone.
That was Andrew.
You're on the very last page, sorry about that.
That's all right. This was very informative, and I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have put into this already. One of my first questions was about the Modern Teacher course, and how many teachers have gone through that sort of preparation, and maybe this is for you, Sonia, where we feel our teachers are with comfort level with a lot of these new technologies and ways of teaching, actually. So, as of about 10 minutes before this meeting started, we hit 80. I continue to have people write to me and request to join every day. So, because of the mix of synchronous and asynchronous, and the fact that each webinar is being recorded, we can continue to add people on a rolling basis. So, it's great, because I'm getting emails that say, hey, so-and-so told me about, can I join? And so, I just push out that information. So, that's one piece. The other piece, too, as Krista alluded to, is some people are participating in the professional learning, and then they're building things as teams. So, there are a few instances in which teams are sharing landing pages, so everyone may not be registered, so the numbers are also bigger, and I just don't know. So, that's one piece. And then, in terms of the facility and people's comfort with this, so that our elementary summer learning academy started this week, and it's built in a remote, or excuse me, in a hybrid model. So, there are two days in-person and two days remote, some people have elected to have their children only participate remotely. And everything is built largely around the beginning playlist, as the students get towards five and six, we have a couple that were built around the intermediate with some more advanced choices. But it's just amazing to listen to students report out at morning meeting, or at learning share towards the end of our scheduled time together, what they've done, and why they selected what they selected. So, we're building capacity in terms of how many people are engaging, plus we had the two days of PD for 100% of our staff in June, where we did introduce and start this work. And then, we are testing it out in some of these summer learning opportunities as well to be able to surface some of the questions, and what some of the continued needs may be, in part from student perspective, so. That's great, because that's, sounds like that's obviously a big piece of getting everybody's comfort level with all of this. So, the other piece where, I think I'm kind of like Kelly, where we have to like see things very concretely, and I guess I'm wondering about when this is happening remotely, how much time is anticipated that students will be on screens versus having time to do things that aren't involving them, you know, being on their devices the whole time? And is there sort of this expectation, at least at the Lawrence and High School level, that it'll be like it was in the classroom, where every class is meeting every day? And I guess what I'm thinking about is when you have this, how the synchronous and the asynchronous parts work, when we've added in all these other pieces of movement and mass breaks, and sanitizing, and all of that, or is all of that open for discussion? Tricia, I saw you smiling, which meant you were ready to answer it.
Yes, I'll go.
Okay.
I think part of that is that it's open for discussion, because it's one of the things that is part of this school level of how do we make these things happen, and how do we continue? Right now, with the structures in place, it's very difficult from what my classroom looked like pre-COVID. My classroom was designed in groups, and my classroom was designed with my students interacting, having conversations, debating, arguing, you know, working together. And so, those pieces, I cannot put physically back into my classroom in the structured space, if I have to go back in that classroom. But remotely, I can allow my kids to interact, and I can allow them to discuss, and I can allow them to interact in a different way, through things like the Zoom breakout rooms, and synchronous conversations, and small group instruction. And so, that's where the asynchronous and the synchronous kind of start to come together, but it's uncharted territories for all of us, in terms of what that looks like every day on a regular basis. And until we, I mean, we don't have a high school schedule that's nailed down, so I don't know how many periods a day I would see my kids, and how long I would see them for, and stuff like that. So, part of what we're designing is, we're trying to design something for three scenarios that we don't know which one we're going to be in at any moment, and that's hard. But these are really nice, and they're something that you feel like you're helping you grow as a teacher, and that the work you're putting in, and the time, because it is time-consuming, is something that's going to pay it forward, not be just for this year. So, it would allow me to teach in my traditional classroom, or teach in this type of environment in the future.
Terry, go ahead.
So, I'm glad that the state allowed for the 10 extra days for teachers to do this, because you have your playlist, you have your things on paper, you have all these things, but once you got a little bodies in there, I mean, and teachers know patterns and things that kids are going to do, that you need to think about it in advance. I mean, maybe a second grader doesn't even, can't measure six feet, or, I mean, so it's good that you're going to be there in the buildings, right? And you can like walk around and get a handle on these things, so I'm glad for you, because you need it.
We do, thank you.
We really do.
Any other questions just on teaching and learning? Try and take it section by section, just jump in if you have one, because I'm scrolling through, but I can only see four people at a time. Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight, and for all the information, I really learned a lot. And should we, I'm going to suggest that we actually, because there's so much in this, and we've already heard health and safety, and we've already heard about facilities, so I'm going to ask that we actually go back and deal with some questions, if the school committee has any questions on those top, on those two, the first two sections of the presentation. And for any members of the public who have joined us tonight, the public questions will be handled at the forum. So, we knew that there were going to be so many public questions and comments about all the pieces of this, that we actually set up an entire another meeting, because we just can't handle it all in the course of tonight. So, the school committee will get through their stuff, their questions and comments tonight, and then any member of the public or the community that has questions and comments can join the forum on Tuesday at 6:00. Or, of course, you know, email the school committee, or email Lori, ours is schoolcommittee@ and it's thefalmouthk12.ma.us. So, does anybody have any questions about the health and safety piece, or facilities for Patrick or Lori, from the stuff that we've already scrolled through, before we get so far down the line that nobody can remember? And again, just jump in.
I do.
Oh, everyone. Leah, go ahead, and I think, John, did you have one, too? Okay, Leah, then John, thanks.
Okay. Well, I do, I want to, I want to thank the teachers for presenting that. I've been able to do some modern teacher training, so I've gotten to see, I saw Ms. Hennessy in one of my breakout sessions, so it's been fun, and I am really excited that Falmouth is doing this. I think it's a great thing for the teachers, I think it's a great thing for the students, I think it's a great thing for the families. My question is very different than this, but I just wanted to acknowledge that. So, I know that we talk a lot about, in the guidance from the commissioner, around the cohorts of students. And my question is, and my concern is around, if we are bringing in teachers, so specialists, or special education teachers, or English language teachers, into all different cohorts in a day, because that is the, that is what their job usually consists of, of going into many different classes, and working with many different students, how are we How are we ensuring that those teachers are, are safe? Seeing as though we don't want students to be in other cohorts, but we're putting adults in other cohorts.
Thank you, Leah, and I'll do that. And before, I think that our two teachers are leaving, I just want to thank them again. As they are on their way out, I want to make sure that, we really appreciate you being here. Great presentations from both of you and thank you for all the work you're doing. Okay, so Leah, back to you. I'm sorry, I just wanted an opportunity to say thank you too. So, yes, I know that it's, you know, it's concerning, but I'm going to go back to, you know, what the experts say, our medical professionals are saying, mask, distance, and, you know, keeping those hands washed, right? And so yes, they'll see many different students, but they're, they're still following the rules. So it's really about the kids having the cohorts. And that, that it is true. And I, you know what, I should just, you know, we have a presentation around, I don't, Joan is going to present too. And I don't know if, are we getting into your territory or Joan, do you want to jump in here?
Well, and if you think we're going to get to that, we can certainly hold that question, come back to it if we don't, if.
If you prefer, Kelly, I can respond now or we can wait?
If it's included in your presentation, then let's just wait.
Yeah, and actually Joan is up next in the presentation.
So John, what was your question? And we'll come back to Leah and make sure that we get her question answered.
Yeah, well, it was, it was related and Lori did a nice segue basically on some of the practical things of functionality items like touchless, you know, do we have touchless sanitizer stations like, you know, EcoLab or another company like that and having a bunch of them where, where people can put their hand under and it comes out, is that something that we have?
That's what we have, yeah.
Okay, great. And then the other, the other suggestion was, was where I, where you said they have one-way aisles, you know, in, in the hallways. I don't know if it's all feasible because I know sometimes that gets challenging in the stores of, you know, actually implementing. I don't know if it's feasible maybe to have in some areas, almost like a passing lane, if you will, where you could have like a plexiglass divider on either side of the hallway. So potentially there could be some that could maybe be two-way if you had a certain area that the students and teachers know that if I'm in this area, you know, I won't pass unless this, I'm in that area with the glass. I don't know if that's something that's feasible to them.
Thank you for the suggestion. We can certainly look at that. What we were going to do is when we, do you not have one-way hallways? We were going to stagger the classrooms when they come and go so that they were the only ones in the hallway at that time. But, you know, let's give that, let's give that study to Patrick and see what he comes up on that one.
In the fire department.
Yeah, one of the, one of, yeah, fire, fire codes and other security issues are still around. We take them seriously.
As do I, so good.
Oh, sorry, John. Andrea, go ahead.
Yeah, for Patrick, I had some questions about the ventilation and the MERV filters. I guess to, to know whether they actually filter virus particles. I'm sort of trying to understand how that's actually going to be helpful.
Yeah, that's a fair question on whether or not they filter the COVID virus. What, what the recommendations were from, from our vendors is that this is, this is hospital-grade filtering, right? So it's the same filters that hospitals use. So that, that's really what the recommendation is. I, I am doubtful that there's any proof that we can, you know, point to that this filters COVID specifically. So the vendors were just focusing on saying this is a hospital-grade filter.
Okay. Because I guess I'm just trying to figure out on those bad weather days or, I mean, we've all heard that outdoors is preferable to indoors. But we do have an indoor situation here. And, you know, that, that it becomes an issue in all sorts of other businesses. And I guess I'm just trying to see how our school situation is different enough that we're going to feel comfortable that, you know, just having the windows open or when we can't have the windows open. It's just not sitting very comfortably with me and I just wanted to see if you could walk me through that a little bit more.
So, so again, what we do know is, is that the, how the virus spreads. So that wearing masks, washing your hands and maintaining the six-foot distance, especially when the mask is off or the three-foot when the mask is on. And we're, we're, we are able to do that in our schools, at least setting them up the way we've planned to set them up. So that's what we can rely on now. We rely on the guidance on this. It's, it was, all the DUCI guidance has been vetted very thoroughly. So we are following the guidance.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Patrick about the facilities piece, for the health and safety piece? Leah?
I'm sorry to have another question. Just something that just concerns me is the, the idea that our littlest learners could be just three feet apart without masks when we know the six-foot distance is the best. And I just, that just concerned me. So I'm just putting it out there that I would prefer it being a six-foot distance with our students who are not wearing masks.
I can, go ahead.
No, I was going to move on. Go ahead, sorry.
I can just speak, speak to that. Our youngest grade levels is where we have our lowest enrollment to begin with. And we tend to have very large rooms for, that allows them to tend to spread out. So, you know, I, I do think for our youngest learners, the, the distance will be there. Whether they maintain the distance is, is probably the question.
Melissa?
I feel like this is maybe back towards Sonya, but this question just came to my head. So much of our teaching, speaking of the littles, I think is where I thought of this, has to do with how we look at them and how we engage with them and our facial expressions. And I know that we are expecting our teachers and our staff to be wearing masks. Have we looked at some of the masks that are transparent? Have we, I'm sure that you've thought of this, but I just, I feel like that's such a big deal, not just with littles, but with people in general. I am, you know, it's hard to communicate with people when you can only see this much. And you can't see if you're smiling or you're frowning or you're making a face like, what are you talking about? So is that something that we're looking at as well?
Yes, please, Joan.
So thank you, Melissa. Very, very valid concern. So we have, we have ordered masks that do have the clear shield. So those are for our, our youngest learners that are, especially for the staff that are going to be required to wear that. So that they do have access to the oral motor skills that are needed in order for sound production, in order for early literacy. Those masks will also be available for our students in our more specialized programs. Any student who may have deaf or hard of hearing, students that require speech and language-related service providers. So yes, we have ordered those.
Great.
Does that answer it?
No, go ahead, Melissa, go for it.
Yes, Joan, that definitely answers it. Thank you. Back to Patrick. Is that okay, Kelly, that I have another?
That's what we're doing. This is what we're doing tonight.
Okay, so I'm thinking of when we have, when we're allowing the windows open, are we now going to be able to pop the doors open to also encourage ventilation when sometimes we can't always open windows in some of the buildings?
So the question about, about opening doors, where many of our elementary schools do have doors exiting the classroom to a playground or some play area. That is a question for our Health and Safety Committee that we're pulling together and we'll be meeting with our, our folks that have been really helpful from the police department around school security. So we don't have specific guidance on that yet, but that is a discussion item.
Teri?
Well, I don't know to whom to ask this question, but we spend a lot of time on the remote part of our hybrid situation. So let's just say we're on Monday and we have one half of the people there, okay? The people that are physically in the building. I'm talking about the Lawrence School now because they're going to do this now too, right? They've changed, okay, over to the high school model too. So you're going to have kids in the building or in the classroom with the teacher. Are the other kids who are at home supposed to be watching this too?
Sonya, you want to take that?
Yes, sorry, I couldn't get the unmute to unmute. Yes, so one of the things that we're working on is being able to share out the beginning, the small instruction that happens around the specific lesson or concepts that are being introduced. And then there may be times at which the students move to asynchronous work through the playlist. And then there may be times where they stay on and they listen to additional parts of the instruction. So that's one of the things that we're in the process of working out and we're actually testing out right now in the Summer Learning Academy as well.
Yeah, and that goes back to when I was talking about the teachers being in there because, you know, when you're physically, the physical part of it, you know, to me, the kids that are there seems to me they're getting a little bit too much technical stuff rather than physical stuff from the overall descriptions that we've had. Am I missing something?
So one of the, one of the ways in which the technology is aiding while they're in class is because we can't put them together at a table or turn the desks. We can still have them do small group interactions and be able to work collaboratively by using Google Meet or Zoom. So it's allowing us to do some of the things that we would otherwise be able to readily do in person if we could move furniture and be closer together. So that we don't lose all of those practices while maintaining the spacing. So the technology allows us to be able to do some of that as opposed to being a completely different experience because the technology is there, if that makes sense.
So like if students want to raise their hands and ask questions, like in the non-watching of a playlist activity, will they do that, you think? I mean, is those are the things the teacher are going to work on when they're there in the buildings?
So if the student is working remotely, is that what you're asking?
No, if they're in the.
If they're in person, yeah, the teacher's there. So they would just raise their hand and ask for clarity as they would. But then if, if a teacher wanted to put, you know, groups of three together, they could assign that through Zoom so, because they can't turn their desks and go together. But the, the practices of being at the front of the room, if they're interacting on the smart board, if they're drawing out a diagram on the whiteboard or students want to interact, ask questions, all of that would remain the same.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any last questions? Okay, and not that you can't follow up and, and of course, you know, we have the ability to, to just email our questions after the fact too. So Lori, can you bring back up that slide and, and we'll let Joan finally get a turn? And Joan, no one can see you, so they don't know that you injured your foot and you're laid up. And so no one has been able to offer you sympathies because you're always sitting down in your pictures.
Well, thank you. I'm, I'm healing right along.
I'm so glad.
So, thank you. So in addition, I'm glad we had an opportunity to do some of the questions there. Because as we know, students with disabilities, we have, we have a continuum of instruction that we do. So what Sonya and the teachers just shared with us is the teaching and learning for all students. And then I just wanted to share a bit more for some students with, with disabilities and some other special subgroups that we have. So I did just want to start out by saying that we are, we're committed to making sure that we're providing FAPES. So that's a free and appropriate public education to all of our students that are eligible for special education services. And we're doing that in alignment with their needs and making sure that we've got, you know, protection to the, the student's health and safety as well as their educators and all our, our related service providers and instructors. So with that, we're going to make sure that we're providing all of the IEP services. So I think if you recall, when we came in to remote learning, we, we started with enrichment and then new instruction and then making sure that we were providing all the tenants under the ID, the Individuals with Disability Education Act. So as we come back, we'll making sure that we will be providing all services that are, that are articulated within the IEP. What we're going to do and I, this, I'm hoping as I talk, I, I'll try and address Leah's question as well. But in order as, you know, both Lori and Sonya have shared, the cohort models. So in order to maintain the cohort models, we're going to ensure that students with disabilities can receive as, in alignment with the IEP, but as much of their service delivery in the push-in model to the maximum extent. So we will still be able to have pull-out services or for people that may be more specific to special education. We call those C-grid services, so those pull-out services. But again, as we do that, we're going to make sure that we're maintaining all the health and safety procedures. And then there might be some areas where some of our specialized service delivery could potentially be done remotely. When we think about, and Leah, this, this might answer some of, address some of your question as well. If we think about students that, if we have a related service provider that potentially would do a small group and a pull-out service and a C-grid service, but yet the students are in different cohorts, there may be some, depending on the activity, not all, but there may be some opportunities where students could remain in their, in their general education environment, but through the use of the technology and the, the devices, be able to do some of the service, the, the more individualized service specifically through that. So there's, there's different approaches that we can ensure that we're providing the service delivery. And I also just wanted to highlight, and this is as you're familiar with the guidance that we have. You know, we really need to make sure that we're prioritizing students that are considered to be high needs, our preschool students, students with more significant and complex needs. We use for, for those that, you know, teachers that may be watching, parents that may be watching. One of the ways that the guidance helps us to determine that and, and kind of quantify that or operationalize that high needs, high priority student is. To use the PL1, so using, using kind of the characteristics of the IEP, elements within the IEP. So these are students though, so our pre-K students, our, our students with more complex and significant needs. Even if we are going into a remote model, our goal and our priority is to make sure to the best of our ability, when we can do in-person, face-to-face instruction, that these are the students that will be, will be prioritizing for that in, in, in school, in-person service delivery. Is it Lori that's advancing the slides? Okay, thank you. Within that, we also recognize that there are some special considerations. And I do feel like we've addressed some of these pieces through our conversations. But I think it's important to know as we think about students, you know, both at our, our more specialized programs, in our preschool programs, all the way through our program or post-grad programming for students with, that stay with us till their 22nd birthday. We, we have a continuum of needs. So we want to make sure that we're also going to be providing and assisting our staff with the necessary supports to be able to meet the needs of all of our students. So some of the things where at our younger age, we have some students that based off of their disability, they do require some assistance with toileting and activities of daily living. And those are some of those more functional-based skills outside of what Sonya and our teachers just shared with us through the teaching and learning section. And we want to make sure that we're following all the protocols that we have in place to begin with for students that have those needs. You know, all of those procedures would still be in place. But we just want to ensure that everyone knows that we have even more specialized PPE equipment for our staff. Lori did share with you back in the equipment and the masks, but, but also, you know, just want to say that we have the N95 masks, we have the blue medical mask, we have the face shields, we have the clear face mask, we have the gowns, the gloves, we have the shoe protector. So we have, we've already been very planful about what additional PPE we may need for some of our more specialized programs and/or just more specialized service delivery. It's also important to recognize that for some of our students, as a very last resort, students that do have some difficulties with, with regulation, behavioral regulation, self-regulation. We have, we use what's called safety care model and the safety care is part of our de-escalation and, and restraint procedures that we use. So as with always, we always use all of our de-escalation techniques. So just recognizing that this is also another group of students and staff that we are very much planning for that as a very last resort, if all of the other attempts for de-escalation have failed and we are, we get to a point where there is imminent danger to self for others and we do need to employ the safety care models. We've also got additional PPE and we've got some, some plans that we'll have in place for, for those students and those staff in those situations and they're in those, excuse me, in those learning environments. Lori, may I have the next slide, please?
Oh, I'm trying.
There we go. Oh, I also, if I can just jump back, I'm sorry, across all of this, the special ed services will be provided. What we can, we were, we're equipped to make sure that we're providing them regardless of whether we're in-person, across the three models. So in-person, if we have a hybrid model, or if we, we move into remote. Another group that I want to make sure that people are very much aware of is our students that have 504 accommodation plans. So even as we were in our remote learning in the spring, as we roll back into the school year, regardless of the three models that we're in, we will still be, any student that's eligible for a 504 accommodation plans, their specific accommodations that are articulated in that plan will be provided for them. If there's any type of slight modifications to those accommodations across our three models, that we will make sure that we match the, the learning environment and the academic instructional delivery model that we're using. And I believe I have one more. And then also part of the guidance when we think about student supports is also we don't want to ever lose sight of any of our students who are considered to be homeless in foster care or in congregate care. So these are also considered, some of our students that we will, we have a high priority on to ensure that they have access to education. So we will be providing the opportunity for in-person instruction as some of those other student, or some of those other groups that I just shared about having the in-person instruction, even if there's a hybrid model going in place. They certainly have the opportunity as all students do across, you know, choice for remote. But we will ensure that we prioritize that instruction and transportation because we want to make sure that we, we are meeting the needs of all our students and that we're acting in accordance with both the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Assistance Act as well as the Every Student Succeeds Act and the, the regulations within those. And I believe the next slide.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Joan.
You're welcome.
Do you want to take any other questions for Joan before we jump back to Sonya?
Yep, I was muted. Sorry, I was going to say the exact same thing. Terry, go ahead with your question for Joan.
It isn't a question, it's a comment that you have done an unbelievable amount of fine tuning on, on individual needs. And I hope that you get some help somewhere for the teachers who have to wear the shoe protectors and the special mask and everything. I'm daunted by that, just hearing it. I hope, you know, you get some kind of aid, financial or whatever, to help those people.
So Joan, I actually have a question for you. So I'm not sure that I understood you correctly, that, that students, I think I understood correctly that students with disabilities that will be prioritized should we have the opportunity to have some in-person education, that, that if that model is going to be better for kids in that particular setting, then we were going to do that. Are you saying that that is also true for 504 and homeless in foster care as well?
So it is not 504. The 504, those would be accommodations to access to the general ed curriculum. So the 504 accommodations are just going to be provided to students across all three of the models.
Okay.
The students that we're prioritizing to make sure that if we have the ability to have in-person instruction. So say, I mean, it's one thing if, if we are fully in-person, every student's coming to school all day, that's great. That's our typical model, that's what we have. When we look at our, our hybrid models, so right now at the high school and at Lawrence, our students that are considered the higher priority students that include the students with more, our preschool students with special needs, our students with more complex special needs, and then our students in homeless, foster and congregate care also would be the ones that are going to be prioritized to ensure that they have the in-person, access to the in-person instruction on a consistent basis versus a hybrid.
Great, okay, that makes much more sense to me. Thank you. Because obviously if we have homeless kids, you know, the best place we can have them is in school every day. Very, okay, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you for clarifying. Any other questions for Joan? Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, let me just get this right, Joan. If the students come in, the regular students come in week, one week on, one week off, are we talking about our special needs kids being then straight through every day?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Okay, thank you so much. And now we move on to
And we're coming back for one more. We'll talk about English learners.
Thank you. I recently met with Christine Nicholson, who's our English Language Development Department Head. And we've been walking through this in terms of trying to do what's best for students across their proficiency levels in learning the English language. We are looking at the language screener that we have available for us, a temporary screener that we can use in being able to assess students proficiency levels. Also, we have summer professional development that's ongoing strictly for English Language Development teachers. And in part, what they are doing is they're revising their curriculum units to make sure that they can be used in optimal instruction for remote and in-person learning. One of the other things that we're also piloting during the Summer Learning Academy is having one of our ELD teachers help teachers as an SEI coach and they're helping to plan instruction. We have several Ls who are engaging with us in the Summer Learning Academy. Some remotely and some are taking advantage of the in-person opportunities. And so that colleague from the ELD department is helping us to be able to begin to assess the differing needs in both situations. And we are going to continue to meet and continue to advance our planning. Christine is the member of our district who participates in our English Language Education Network Meeting sponsored by the Department of Education. She and I are continuing to look at publications that are released and we've reached out to a couple of other districts as well that we've sort of begun to form a more local, more regionalized discussion with. And as our plans continue to firm up, we'll be able to share them, but definitely looking at it from the perspective of the proficiency levels and making sure that our students continue to make positive progress with learning the language.
Any questions for Sonya before we move on to the next section? Sorry.
And I was muted, so thank you. Leah.
Um, so I, obviously, you know, I'm, I'm an English Language Learning Director, so I know this well. One thing that has been very hard in the ELL field is that we are, we don't have guidance like special education does around what, just kind of the parameters of looking at remote, hybrid and in-person. But one thing that has definitely been at the forefront for us is around staffing and around scheduling. And so I'm just wondering for Falmouth, if there's discussion around cohorting students who, so our earliest learners, so our lower proficiency level students are called foundational students. And then our, as we get to our higher proficiency levels, they're called transitional. So the thought is maybe cohorting that the foundational students and the transitional students. So it would allow more of a cohort model for less exposure with the students, also with the staff. So I'm just wondering if that's something that you guys are in the works with also.
That is the exact conversation Christine and I had last week. So one of the things that she was going back to look at was the numbers and the concentrations by schools to see what following through on, on that, that model of cohorting students would look like. So that is something that she's looking at and then would factor back into the school-based planning.
I just have a follow-up question to that. Now, in our, in Falmouth, do we have any ESL teachers right now who are going between schools?
That is the second part. So Christine, in looking at the numbers, is also, she and I talked, we're going to, I think we're meeting again next week because we do have a couple of our colleagues who have been splitting time over two schools, fewer than we had a couple of years ago. But we still have two, I believe, who are traveling. So we're looking at ways that we can adjust their schedules as well.
And I guess that would align with any teacher who does, who's a traveling teacher of ensuring that that teacher has one home base and it isn't going into two different school communities, right?
Yes. But recognizing our, our team is fewer than seven, with seven schools, so trying to figure it out. Yeah.
Related to that, do we have a lot of staff who are in that position that are, are shared between, other than all of you? Do we have other staff that are shared between buildings?
Yes, we do. OT, PT, speech and language, but we are trying to minimize that as much as possible. So we were able to, we added some supports for, this is just one example for our school adjustment counselors. And so we were able to, since we added additional hours for people, we were able to make sure they were assigned to one. I know, Joan, I don't know if you want to speak to it, Joan, very briefly, but I mean, we're looking at all of those positions. But we don't, we don't have enough students that require services to have one per, per building, right? I mean, and, and spread out. So it, I mean, that is a difficult piece that we're, we're dealing with and trying to work through.
Lori, can you please promote Lisa? We lost her and she's back in the attendee list again. We've got to get her back over here. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yep, I'm getting there.
Apologies, my internet was funky for a second there, but I think I'm back. Hopefully everyone can hear me. So the next section, did anyone have any last questions about ELs before we move on? Okay, the next section is on the actual buildings.
Yes, hold on. Now I got to go back to the screen.
I know, now you're, sorry. I only know because I have two screens going because otherwise I can't see you all. I finally figured out the best way to do this.
Okay. All right, so, so school-specific plans. I'll go through this. I don't think this is new information for the school committee or any of our community since, you know, I've been updating things in the, my weekly communications. But for the high school, students will be separated into two halves. One half will be in school one week, in-person learning, and then the other remains at home for one week for remote learning and then they alternate. This is the preferred model by the medical profession that cohorts are in and then they're out for a period of time. If anything were to develop, symptoms or not symptoms are out for a longer period of time between times that they're in. Students will be scheduled according to their course selections. If we go back to the core values, one of the things that does bring joy to students at the high school level is that they get to select their courses and that they have options and elect those. And we want to be able to still have that for, for students. So at this time, we are not reducing any of those selections for students. We are looking at, at different models on scheduling, so there'd be fewer transitions each day. So the staff is working with the administration through this and we're looking at a four, four by four, so block, so there'll be four classes each day, so there's fewer transitions for the students. When, you know, the, the students will pass from one class to the next between following all the safety guidelines and the, the scheduled classes will make sure it's published for the students and the families. The students in-person and remote will be participating in the same assigned class through a blended model approach. And I think that our teachers did a great job explaining that and Sonya, so I'll just kind of move past that at this point. And students assigned to specific educational programs will participate 100% in-person every week. And that was what Joan had alluded to in her part of it. And then the remote learning, students in 100% remote will be learning. They'll be assigned to classes and participate with their peers through synchronous and asynchronous that we've already talked about. Lawrence, the students will be separated into two halves, the same, they alternate week to week. Students will be scheduled according to their course selections. In, at Lawrence, the, the students will remain in the classroom, so they will be cohort, co-horted. It is easier because they're already in teams and the teachers will rotate within the, from class to class, but the students will remain. The students, the same, participating in the remote learning on the week off, they'll participate with their class through a blended, blended learning approach. And then again, students assigned to specific educational programs will be in-person each week. Again, those in 100% remote will be participating through Schoology and synchronous and asynchronous learning with their peers that are in school. Morris Pond, we have the in-person learning model. Students will be assigned to cohorts. 18 to 20 students are in-person, they will be participating in the Google Classroom. When students are present for in-person learning, they will be assigned to one classroom. And the, the teachers will pass from room to room, including your art, music, PE, health and our digital learning class. And then the 100% remote students will be assigned to the teachers so that they can participate. And I'm going to just stop here and just add a second. At any time, we know that students, we may be asking students to, you know, quarantine for 14 days or a parent may, a parent may not be, or parents may keep their children home because they're not feeling well. That could be one, two or three days. When they're home, when the students are home, they can still participate as well. So if you think about it as being kind of more of a fluid experience for students that can be in school, but if they're at home, certainly not if they're not feeling well to participate. But sometimes students may be home, but may be able to participate and feel well enough to participate with their classmates synchronously and asynchronously, you know, whether they're laying on the couch or in bed, but they may still be able to. So this kind of is a game changer for students that, you know, are not feeling well or can't be in school. So this is kind of works the same as the remote. So anytime you may have students at home on a remote while you have students in the classroom, but they're all considered one, one classroom, one cohort. At East Falmouth, students will be assigned to cohorts, 12 to 20 students in a classroom. They'll be using Google Classroom as well. Again, they stay in their, their rooms and then the teachers will move to the cohorts, you know, art, music, library, technology. So the teachers are moving, the students stay in the cohort. Mullen Hall in-person, it's the, the same model, the same model for North Elementary and the same for the in-person T-ticket. and the same for the in-person at T-Ticket. And then the remote learning for all of our elementary schools is the same. They'll participate in synchronous and asynchronous learning through Google Classroom, through Zoom, and have that opportunity. Our youngest students at kindergarten, first and second, we believe that they will need, those that are on 100% remote, that they will need additional supports. So we will have a teacher assigned at those grade levels specifically for just the remote students. And we're looking for that they would still participate with the classroom, the in-person learning teachers, so that those students will still have opportunities to be with larger classes. But they will have the, also the supports of remote teachers. So before I go to the last part, I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of the models at this time.
Apologize, I was muted, couldn't get through everyone. Leah, go ahead, and then Teri.
So, again, I'm going to express my concern around teachers going in and out of cohorts. So with the specialists, that is a concern I have, and maybe that would also lend itself to being a remote experience where the teachers are zooming into the classes. But it really worries me thinking about an art teacher going and seeing two hundred students a day. So, so that, that's my one concern. And then my other, my other concern is around Morse Pond. And the reason being that there was just a study that was done in South Korea around ages ten and up, and that the study shows that ten and up spread COVID just like adults do. And so my concern, I have a ten-year-old, almost eleven-year-old, that they would not be at the six-foot, and they would be in person with all of the students makes me, makes me worry. And I know I, I did share that with Lori, so I'm just putting it out there to the public right now.
And I don't know, I'm getting a lot of background noise. I don't know if everyone can mute if they're not talking. That would be helpful. I don't know where it's coming from. And I think, Teri, I said you were next.
So I brought up my concern last time about the, the big gap in the, the kids are with, physically with the teachers. And I thought about it again some more, and it's like a nine-day break of when they're, I mean, I know the curriculum's being covered now because Sonya has explained that very well. But I still worry about that nine days that you're not in school with your, your friends, you're at home. So I still, I don't like that. It bothers me. So there was my, I hope it was only two sentences time.
Thanks, Teri. Natalie, and then Andrea.
Great, thank you. Just a quick question. Lori, you mentioned sort of the fluid nature of the process. So if a family selected one or the model, one of the models to begin with, would they have the opportunity then switch? So if they started in remote, could they go to the hybrid or go in-person and vice versa?
So yes, the 100% remote could go into the in-person. It depends on whether that building is, you know, 100% in, or whether it's hybrid, but they would go into the in-person model. Yeah, so we're creating, you know, a process, right? I mean, what we couldn't handle is if on a Friday afternoon, they call and say someone's gonna show up on Monday, right? So we have to be thoughtful about the planning because we have cohorts. So we, we are developing a process, and then for parents to let us know, and just know it's not going to happen immediately, right? So there's many things that we have to go through. We have to, you know, they'll come into the classroom. Obviously, they have their own classroom. We'll have to look at transportation. You know, so just, you know, there's just things we want to prepare the student to integrate into a cohort when they're returning. But absolutely, parents will have that option.
Great, thank you.
Andrea, and then John.
So a couple of questions. One of them is that, Lori, you mentioned that the high school was going to be having some time of four-by-four block schedule. What about Lawrence?
So Lawrence is in the cohort model, so they too are looking at block scheduling. And I believe it is, I believe it's, it's four-by-four too. But I don't want to be quoted on that.
Okay.
Sure it is, but I'm saying.
That's fine, but it's just good to know that, again, with needing some built-in time, how things are, how you're thinking about them. And then Leah had asked about some of the other teachers with music and arts at, at Morse Pond at the elementary schools. So I guess I'm just trying to think about how some of those actually look in the classroom in terms of what you'll actually be able to do. And I was wondering what the current thinking is on that.
So we just got specific guidance for our, the fine arts and our PE classes, so we are working through. You know, we have to look at what that guidance says, and Sonya is working with Julie Williams-Tinkham around the PE, and Steve Edwards, you know, around the fine arts. And so it's, it's very specific, and we're trying to work through that. So we will have more on that at another time. But I will say that we want to definitely have PE outdoors as much as possible. The PE teachers have been working on this. So that is definitely a plus because it'll be another opportunity through the week for them to be outside, be more than ten feet apart, and have mass breaks and be able to enjoy some outdoor physical activity, you know, still meeting our PE curriculum. So they're being very creative about that. So I will say we're trying to be outside as much as possible and just trying to look differently. There will not be singing indoors, but there's always music appreciation, music theory, music, a lot of things we can do. And then on the, you know, either at home, you know, for our youngest students, or on the off weeks, kids can always practice the singing and be able to send things in. I was amazed with the music teachers did this spring where, you know, the students all recorded something, and then they put it all together, and it was quite amazing, actually. So they're very creative, and they're working on a lot of ways. But in general, I don't know if you remember, you know, when we had art on the cart, you know, and way before, you know, we'd be able to have art and music and have their own classrooms. That was very traditional, and so, you know, they pushed their, you know, cart into the classroom, and they had their, you know, their, their subject area in the classroom. And so, yes, I mean, I think that's, you know, we're expecting a lot of that, right? To occur. Some of the, they're also being in the, the schools, they're being very creative in how they're thinking about that. So it may be that each, each one of the special areas may not, may, may see fewer cohorts in, in a two-week period, say, right? So you might have, might have music several times, right? And then they go to another cohorts, you know, other cohorts to keep the number of cohorts down that they actually see. So, I mean, they're being creative with their scheduling, and they're, and they're thinking through very thoughtfully. So I give, you know, I give the staff and our principals a lot of credit for just thinking outside the box and, you know, and ways to keep everybody safe, students and staff.
That's, that's really great. If you allow me, just one last question. It, I think through your explanation, we get a good sense of the different, three different models and how we might move in and out of those. I think the other thing that I've heard, and I just wanted clarification, is that none of those are deemed necessarily better than others. So for parents who might be choosing 100% remote, it really is, that all the, the plans that are being put in place are to meet those students' needs equally as to in-person. So it's not that for every, for everybody, that, that in-person is the absolute best way to go about this, but that you're going to be meeting everybody where they are and where their comfort levels lie.
Absolutely. And I hope through the presentation tonight that families can see, you know, how things have changed since the spring. This is not our spring. The spring was done. I think, you know, one of our teachers said it, you know, well, they were just, you know, learning, it was just a shift. But now, things have really changed, and the students that are going to be on a remote option, and, and that's what works for them. That's why we are spending so much time making sure that they have a quality educational experience. And that, you know, it will be synchronous and asynchronous, and trying to balance the, the amount of time that they are spending in, in front of the computer, but also time that they can work. And, you know, but they're staying engaged with, with the class. It's, you know, tendence will be taken, you know, grading will be a part of it. And, and I, I say that I value the, the remote piece as much as the in-person because it, it does have to, we're trying to meet every family's needs, and I would not have had a plan without that option.
John, do you still have a question?
Yes, well, more of a statement slash, you know, kind of something to think about is, you know, Lori had mentioned that that if a student tests positive, you know, then they're, they're going to be home. And then at that point, it won't be as much of a transition because they can still do remote learning at that time. And I would just throw it out there for, for thought process to, you know, have some sort of a a field for where the, the teachers and the parents will be able to say, you know, let's shut it down too. So the kids can recover, almost like a professional coach in sports, you know, has to say to the athlete who wants to play with an injury or something, you know. So it's some, so that'll be something that'll come up periodically where if any of you can tell a kid's sick, and, you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah, thank you, John, for reiterating that and saying it better than I did. Seriously, because, yes, if, if students are sick, they should, you know, I mean, they're sick, they should disengage, right? But there's going to be times that students may, may not have symptoms, but they were in close contact with someone that was positive, so they have to quarantine for fourteen days, and they're not sick at all, right? And we wouldn't want them to miss two weeks of learning and then try to catch up, or, you know, they, or when they do come back, right, then their classmates have already done all of this, you know, these projects, but this way they can actually stay engaged. So I think there's gonna, you know, we're going to experience students that may be required to stay home that are not symptomatic, that are, that just need to quarantine. And I think, most importantly, for those students, you know, that, that we, that we have this option, and that they are not missing big chunks of their week. And, yeah, I had an email from a parent that says often, you know, sometimes a kid will wake up and they're not feeling well, but by ten o'clock, they're fine, right? And instead of bringing them in, they could actually just, you know, then start participating with the class. And some of those transitions may make more sense than to be bringing them in later, right? So I think there's lots of reasons why this, this, you know, being more fluid and being able to, you know, look out for all of our students, whether they're home or in person, is, you know, why that's a good plan for us to, to go. But thank you, John.
Melissa, I thought, I saw your hand up a while ago. Did you get your question answered, or do you still have one?
So I just want to clarify that the elementary does not have a hybrid model.
Correct. The elementary schools, the four elementary schools and Morse Pond do not have a hybrid. This is Lawrence and the high school. But I do want to say that, that this could change, and I'm, I'm going to give an example of, of why, you know, it could change. You know, Leah quoted the, the study that came out. It was for ten years old and above. At Morse Pond, we're able to maintain that five to six feet. We were not able to do that at Lawrence. But that doesn't mean that as we continue to look, and, you know, we talk about this, that, that, you know, possibly, you know, Morse Pond may have to go to a hybrid too. We're, we're, you know, constantly looking at the models. I don't know. I'm worried about the busing situation, right? If we can't get all, all of the students that went on a bus, and we can't get them all in, then we may have to go to a hybrid just to get the students in. So as Patrick, and what, you know, he may want to, you know, jump in on the transportation piece. We are very fortunate, I said it in my communications back, that we had so many people willing to drive, the, the families. I feel like this really is a community effort to get our students back in that want to be back in. You know, but if they can't drive, you know, we're obligated to, to bus them, and there are no buses that we can add. And finding bus drivers are very difficult. So I just, I just want to caution us that all of this has to come together and work, right? Or the model might have to change based on that. And that's the whole reason for planning an in-person, a hybrid, and a, and a remote, right? Because lots of different thing, indicators may, you know, force us into a decision of one, going one way or the other. And so we're, you know, we're still looking at that at all times and getting feedback from our families, from our staff, you know, and our, and our advisory committee. So just, this is our best thinking right now. Leah?
Lori, so for those parents like me who have children in multiple schools, if they are in a hybrid model, would, would we be able to have them on the same schedule? And how would that, how do we do that as parents? How would we advocate for that?
Yes. So that was part of that, that was part of the survey as well. There were some parents that, that said they did not want them on the same schedule, and we're going to honor that. But the majority did say they wanted their students on the same schedule, and we are, you know, in our database, we're able to pull, you know, everyone that lives at the same address together. So we are able to, you know, to work that out. I'm not saying it's easy, and I want to give credit to the ones in the schools that are actually doing the scheduling. But we really are, you know, to the absolute extent possible, we are going to make sure that that happens. You know, so, and because of the hybrid, I mean, we have a little bit of leeway, you know, if that 50%, 50% tips one way or the other, right? To be able to, to look at that. So that is absolutely the goal.
Any last questions before we go to the, the last slide about what comes next? Okay, let's go to the, moving forward.
All right, so, you know, so families had indicated, you know, as we talked about from the surveys before, whether they wanted in-person, they wanted remote. I'm just gonna want to certify that with the families that they hadn't changed their minds. And then we, remember, we had a large number of families that were still undecided, and we'll have to figure out for those families what their preference are. I'm looking to do that in mid-August. We're continuing to listen to our school community. Part of the reason that this plan, you know, going through this was very long tonight. We wanted to do it tonight for the school committee, but also that everybody can actually hear the plan. As you can see, it's very long. So when we do the, the forum with the families, then, then we're not going to go through this plan again. What we will do is just hear questions. So my goal is on Friday, that a draft plan will go out to families so that they can, you know, review all of what we've done tonight. They certainly, this is, you know, recorded. They could go back and look at the, the plan again, formulate questions, but the, at the family forum, it really is going to be about a question-answer session. So we're not going back over all of this. That was the purpose of tonight. They will get a written draft plan on Friday that, that mimics this, maybe with a few tweaks, because it's still several days away, and we're constantly updating and revising. And then we'll have the family forum so that we can answer questions. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that I was not going back through this presentation again because I really want to leave it open for, for questions and answers. We're still working with all of our reopening committees. They're still working in every single building. We have the Health and Safety District-wide, the Wellness Committee. The nurses are continuing to work. And we have our parent and staff reopen, reopening advisory committee as well. We have started negotiations last week with the Falmouth Educators Association. We have started negotiations last week with the Falmouth Educators Association, and we continue to meet with the leadership of the FEA and continuing negotiations there. Patrick and Greg Kennedy are constantly, you know, that's assessing the bus transportation feasibility. So we will have to give further information on that as we see what's happening with that piece of it, because it really is key to getting all of our students in that want to be in. And thank you again. It is perfectly fine and acceptable and actually a great choice if you want to be 100% remote. And then just to continue to refine our plan, and then I will be communicating weekly, if not more than weekly, with our staff and families. So, you know, communications will begin to ramp up. So everyone has the latest information. I want to say one last thing. I know this is unsettling. It's unsettling for everyone. It's unsettling for our staff not to know exactly how we're going to return. But I really want to tell our families that, you know, I empathize, right? Because we're sitting here saying that we have three models. You know, we, you know, we hope to be able to be in-person and remote, right? And, you know, we, that's the way we want to start. But we did hear from Scott McGann, I mean, you know, that the COVID numbers can change, you know, they could be changing in the next couple of weeks. And so that means that, you know, I think families need to also plan for, you know, whether it's going to be 100% remote, you know, or if we're going to be in-person, or if we have to switch to a hybrid for all of our schools at any point in time. And I know that that's unsettling. I feel for you. But I think, you know, to be transparent here is what we have to do. That it is possible that at any time, we could be in any of those modes. And even though we're planning for in-person and a remote option to begin with, you know, and that's what we're hoping for, you know, that it may come to September and that might not be possible. So I just, I want to encourage families to also have, you know, their three plans in place as well as we continue to plan forward.
Any last questions for Lori? Lisa?
Hi. If this was already answered, I apologize. I'm starting, my eyes are getting heavy. I'm getting tired. So if this has already been addressed, my honest apologies. Are the kids allowed to, or is there a situation where they could perhaps start off 100% remote and shift to different, shift to hybrid? Or do they lock in and they're stuck in this, like whatever they choose, starting off the school year? Are they stuck in that, or can we switch around?
Right, so if they choose in-person, right? Whether it's the in-person, you know, five days a week, every week, or whether it's a hybrid, and they decide that a remote would be a better option for their children, absolutely, they can move to remote. If they go out in a remote and, you know, things are going well, they either, you know, become more comfortable with it. Maybe, you know, at some point through the year, they say, you know what, you know, I'm okay if my, you know, child goes to the in-person. We just have to have a plan for that to happen, right?
Okay.
A lot easier to go from in-person to remote, but moving from remote to bringing a child into the building, we just want to make sure we have a thoughtful plan. And so, you know, we're going to need more than a couple of days' notice, but definitely, we can move in that direction.
And that being said, just because I've got the floor, I just really wanted to say that I'm blown away with the amount of work that's gone into these proposed plans. I just, I can't even imagine the amount of hours that you and your staff have put into making this so that it's safe for the kids. I'm just really impressed with everything, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Lisa. And I'm going to give all the credit to the administrative team. We have an incredible team. Our central office team, which you guys get to see at all the meetings here, but all the principals behind the scenes and all the staff that's been working on this. Yes, it has been a lot of work, but they're doing it because they are incredible. Thank you, Lisa, for saying that.
Okay, so I will make a plug that if you have other questions that you think of afterward, because, you know, this was a lot to digest, that you send any of those questions, for school committee, that you send those questions to Lori. And I would think, you know, no later than the end of this week, just because any tweaks or comments that we make that she may need to include would have to be ready so that they can be included at the information that gets disseminated to families. So, you know, aim for the end of the week for that. And that for our families, I do want to make sure that we have this, at least this section of our school committee meeting easily available, or the slide deck easily available for families so that they feel educated when they arrive at that meeting on Tuesday and can have time to formulate what those questions are. Otherwise, you know, it'll be a lot like this, which is a lot of us trying to digest the information. So I don't know how we do that, but...
Can we, so I know Ryan will post the link, right, the recording. I will post the slide deck, and then they're going to get a paper version document of this by Friday so that they have the weekend and up until Tuesday to do that, to look at it, okay?
And whatever we can do to make sure it's available in other languages.
Can I just say that, you know, if you can't attend the forum and you do have comments, please, we still are using the info@falmouth.k12.m-a.us. And we are responding to those questions as quick as we can. Sometimes it's two or three days before we get, only because of the volume. And so please be patient with everyone, but we are getting answers to you. If you just want to give comments to us, and some people do that, just say, you know, this is how I'm thinking about this, right? And not, maybe that's fine too, but send in your feedback, and if you have questions, we will get back to you.
Great. Oh, my goodness. That was a lot. Thank you so much. I think we might have been a little off on our timing on our agenda. I don't think we could have moved it any faster. So, thank you. So we'll move on. We have two resolutions next on the agenda that came up at our last meeting and requested to appear tonight. The first one, they're both, I think, from MASC. The first was a resolution regarding COVID-19 state funding. And since our agenda says discuss and act, we'll do that first. And I don't know if anyone wants to, you know, make a plug for that, and then we'll take a motion. John?
Well, I'll just go right into it. A motion that we accept COVID-19 state funding.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Bill's got a second. And is there any discussion or comments about that resolution? Go ahead, Andrea.
Yeah, I just wanted to do a reminder that both of these resolutions are for mass to be able to do advocacy on behalf of school committees. This is normally done at the delegate meeting in November, but these two were of great enough importance to move along a little bit sooner that they're asking for school committees to tackle them sooner than the November delegate meeting. So that's why it's there.
Any other comments about the COVID-19 resolution? Okay, so a vote on whether or not, on approving the COVID-19 state funding resolution. It's a roll call vote. Melissa, you're first on my list today.
Melissa Keefen.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
John?
John Fenner, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinnalopoulos, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Terry?
Terry, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kelly Welch also, yes, it passes unanimously. So I will sign this, and we will send it along. Thank you. Next one is the school committee anti-racism resolution. This has a lot in common with the statement that we had already put out. Is there a motion for this one?
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee anti-racism resolution.
Leah has the motion, and Terry, are you seconding?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Is there any discussion about this one?
Yeah, yeah. So I love the aspect of this resolution as what we actually would do. I just, I have a hard time with understanding if we can really do these things within the school district right now. And I think I would defer to Lori around if we are signing a resolution that is saying that we are going to do these things. I want to feel 100% confident because I believe we should be doing these things. But I also want to know that budget-wise, staff-wise, we're in a pandemic. Can we sign a resolution like this right now and really be working on this? I mean, that's, I want to know we can do it.
Leah, actually, thank you for that thoughtful question. I appreciate that. So everything in the resolution has been what we have been working on. And all I can attest to is the last two years, but I do believe beyond that. But we have been working on this. We've been looking at our curriculum. We have been recruiting and retaining our teachers. We have been looking at all of our policies and all of our practices. And I'm going through, so I read this earlier when it first came out, and it does align, and it's absolutely, you know, what we're committed to. It's one of our goals for this year. I feel like we have two major goals, and that is, you know, how do, you know, what's the teaching and learning during COVID? And, you know, how are we responding to equity, diversity, inclusion, and social justice? And so we are absolutely committed to all of those pieces. So I have absolutely no issue with the school committee signing on. I don't feel like you are putting anything on us. I think you're actually affirming what we're doing.
So can I just ask a specific question? Because it does say that it would be all district staff for annual professional development. Are we able to do that?
And that is what we have it on the PD schedule, starting one of the first three days. And it will be consistent through the school year. So it will be ongoing, and it is part of the professional development that we are offering this year. For everyone.
I appreciate that question, Leah, because, you know, we don't want to over commit what we can't deliver, so.
Kelly, do you want to mention at this point also the professional development for the school committee? I mean, I just, you know, because it is, you know...
Yeah, I mean, we are already going to be doing this through our workshop that we're holding and at some date in September that we haven't actually figured out yet with the select board. So we are already meeting this piece too. And I think if we think of it as a continuum and not something we have to accomplish in the first month of school, you know, this isn't going to get solved immediately, but... John?
This is actually probably more of a postscript because I am in favor of the resolution. But I think in the discussion phase, it's as good a time as any to mention that I support all activities towards self-reflection and improvement of racial relations. Within the course of the discussion, I think it's worthy to acknowledge the sincere efforts of individuals within the institutions who work to make positive impacts and continue to strive to both improve themselves and the institutions by incorporating newest initiatives. I'm thankful for their efforts, both in the past, present, and future. And included in that is our school system, teachers and staff, who are the grassroots to impact future generations. And also including that is our Falmouth Police Department, who I'm thankful for their daily efforts on behalf of our community. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Any other last comments about the resolution? Okay, so we'll vote on approving the school committee anti-racism resolution. Melissa?
Melissa Keefen, yeah.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
John?
John Fenner, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinnalopoulos, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes, so that passes unanimously out as well. I will sign that, and we'll send that on. All right, thank you so much. Next is our first read on the student handbooks. Some leisure reading for all of us, only like, you know, I don't know, 700 pages of content. Did somebody want to speak to this? Oh, Terry, you're muted.
I was being a wise guy. I said, welcome to our world with all the...
I know, right? No kidding. Did somebody want to speak to this before we open it up for questions?
I can. I just, so we offered you what we hope to be a summarizing cover letter coming out of our last meeting. And while we thought comprehensive policy could be quite a bit complete, the entire work around revising the handbooks this year was to create the alignment between all of the new policies and the content of the handbook. So there really are not other significant substantive changes in the handbooks aside from the alignment of the policies. And there are some places where we chose to take things that were procedural or that were repeated in multiple sections of the website or other documents out of the handbook. And really, we're a little bit clearer about what exactly needs to be in the handbook. That was a focal point of our conversation. And then in the version you have, you can see where we're really going to work hard in the online posting to create hyperlinks so that we don't have to be redundant in reposting information, but drive to other parts of our site. And then also, in the short read, hopefully, we created a COVID response addendum, or we called it the insert, but it'll be posted online where we will unpublish parts of the handbooks that are not relevant during specific models or periods of time and refer to the COVID insert for the current information regarding school operation. So thank you. I just wanted to share that really quickly.
Great. And this is just our first read, so it's going to come back to us again. It'll be, it'll, we'll come for a vote at our next one.
Yeah, so quickly, though. You usually have two weeks, but it'll be on the next meeting.
Right. Leah?
So I have a question about the transportation section in the COVID special edit section. And my question is, it says that if a family did not request a bus pass initially, they may reach out to the director of transportation. However, students seeking access to buses that are at capacity will be placed on a waitlist. And I guess my question is just a legal and kind of logistical one. As a public school system that offers transportation to students who, I believe it's one mile, or is it? What's the radius? One mile? Two miles out?
Actually, everybody.
What is it?
I think we actually offer it to everybody.
Okay, so can we...
Legally, I think it's two miles.
Okay, can we put a student on a waitlist where a family's asking for transportation? That's my question.
I'm not sure who's taking us. So I was just waiting on. So, you know, Leah, one of the things that, I want to back up, I think Sonya just said this. At this point, we're not sure what to do, right? If, you know, we've asked people to initially tell us if all of our buses are full. I'm just going to be completely transparent. If all the buses are full, and, you know, a parent, you know, after four weeks of driving their students because they're willing to do that, right? And then they say, I'm tired. I'm not going to do this anymore. I will be honest with you. We do not know what to do at this point. And it could be if we can't fit the student on the bus, then, you know, do we have to move that school to a hybrid so that we have half the students in so that we can actually, you know, have all students? You know, I don't know what the options are, and we're not getting the guidance yet from the state on those type of decisions, if at all we will. The superintendents are talking about it. We have, you know, a district that's thinking they can't get all of them on the bus, so they're going to have to go to hybrid at every grade level because of the bus situation. I, so I'm just going to tell you that I'm not sure what we're going to be able to do around that. But I will say that, you know, it may be a waitlist until we can work something out. Like, I just don't know what it's going to look like. But it is probably the most concerning piece right now about whether we will be able to continue the models that we have, you know, that we're planning. about whether we will be able to continue the models that we have, you know, that we're, we're planning. So I wish I had an answer, you know, do I know whether we can, you know, do that and then move them to a bus pass? You know, when, when we, you know, can work it out? I mean, I just don't know. There's just so many moving parts around that. And I can't do anything but just be honest that I don't have an answer. The other piece about that guidance that I want, the, the COVID section, the subcommittee had said that, that that section is the section that can be fluid. So when you're voting tonight, I'm, you know, asking you, it's not word for word that that part can be updated based on the situation. And that is the one, you know, positive thing of moving all the handbooks to an online option is that we can update things as needed. So, and that is one section that absolutely, you know, will probably, probably be need to be updated, you know, many times.
Sure. Any other first que, John?
Well, no, I was just going to say if, if it gets tight with the buses, maybe a staggered start time might be part of a solution. Have X number of kids come in a certain time and then a little bit later.
And I appreciate that. We're already in a three-tiered system, and we literally have no room, no, 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 no minutes to actually do another run, unfortunately. So because it, because that is, you know, but back to Kelly's point is that we offer bus transportation for everybody. Some districts are moving away from that and saying that you have to be over that two mile to, to get bus, bus transportation. That has not been a value of this district. Is this the time to relook at it? It, it may be, right? That, that may be, you know, one of the things we might have to look at. You know, I, I don't know. We certainly want to be able to provide everyone a bus ride that needs one or wants one, you know, which has been the culture here. But, you know, I, we, we may have to be making some tough decisions moving forward.
Can I just ask a follow-up question to that? I, I'm just thinking about, as a parent who has put that I need the bus because my husband and I work, we need, we need the bus. Now, would you advise parents that if they are thinking that they might need the bus, that they should put in for that? Would that help with your planning?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe...
We're going off of that survey. So everyone that indicated that they needed a bus are going to be, they're getting a bus pass, right? If anybody else needs a bus pass, they need to let us know.
Okay, so it's that if you think that you would use the bus, okay.
Related to that, I mean, I think the more information we can give people ahead of time, ahead of the second survey, about what school's going to be like and what they can expect, the better their decisions will be and the more likely... Because what we don't want is people showing up on the first day of school and being like, I didn't know I had to wear a mask and stay in the same classroom. And then they're like, I want them, I want out. You know, we don't want to have the, the, not that people can't shift, but the less shifting, the easier it will be, I would imagine.
Yes, I appreciate that.
And we can help that by giving as much as we can indigestible information. Any other quick thoughts about the first read on the student handbooks? Knowing that we can also, if you have other thoughts later, we can follow up. The one question I had is that I saw a lot of comments, and I wasn't sure whether or not the things along the comments on the right side were, were things that we were coming back to later. And I don't know if that question makes sense, but if...
There are a couple places in the comments that we're referring out to pieces that need to be taken out of the handbook or unpublished to match what goes in the COVID. So some of those are set there as reminders so that when we're copying and pasting things from the file into the website, they're just there as reminders to publish or not publish.
That makes sense, given what they said. All right, thank you.
apologize for the confusion, yeah.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure I understood. Okay, any last thoughts? Moving on. Next, we have acting on the school committee meeting date change. And I realize that this is only a week away, but I think it's, since we vote on our school committee calendar and we post it on the website, I think it's really important, especially now that parents know when we're meeting and when we're not meeting. So this is moving that meeting that we had scheduled for August the 11th and bumping it up to August the 6th, which is not our normal meeting date, so that we have time to vote the reopening plans before they have to be submitted to DESI. And then we'll just get this posted on our site so that people know about the change. Is there a motion to delete the August 11th meeting date and add a meeting date on August 6th?
I make a motion to move our August 10th meeting to August 6th.
August 11th meeting to August 6th.
That too.
Want to make sure it's right. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, roll call vote to make this change to...
Just for an explanation of why we're moving that is so we can improve that plan. I don't know, maybe you said that, but I...
I did, but that's okay. There's a lot, and it's getting really late.
I, yes, okay.
Right, it's totally fine. All right, so a roll call vote to move our meeting from the 11th to the 6th of August. Everyone moved, and now Lisa, you're first.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Terry?
Terry, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinnoplis, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Kelly, I'm also a yes, so that passes unanimously. Thanks, guys. Next is the approval of our minutes from our July 14th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the July 14th minutes.
Is there a second? Oh, sorry, Bill, she beat you to it. Natalie, second. Any edits or comments about the minutes? It's a roll call vote.
Can I just ask, yeah, were we approving?
Approving the minutes from our July 14th meeting. Oh, did I skip?
Yes.
I did. Okay, well, we'll take this one and we'll just go back. This is approval of the meeting minutes from July 14th. Thanks, Andrea. I jumped something in the agenda. So it's a roll call vote to approve the minutes from July 14th. Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
It's a yes for me, but I feel like I just need to clarify in, like, with my own notes. It's, it's yes.
Okay, John, that's okay.
John Finer, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinnoplis, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Kelly Welch also, yes, so those pass unanimously, and now we'll go backwards, sorry, to release the executive session minutes from March 10th.
Can I just ask, I'm sorry, can I just ask a quick question? I saw that Natalie seconded the July 14th, 2020. Who made the initial?
Leah did.
Leah, thank you. Thank you.
No worries. So this is just to release the minutes from our executive session on approving the unit, the FEA unit contracts. Is there a motion to approve, to release the minutes? Terry?
I'll make a motion to release those minutes.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, gosh, everybody wants it. Who hasn't had one? Lisa, you get it.
That's all right.
Roll call vote to release the minutes. Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinnoplis, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer abstain, abstention.
Okay, Bill?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that passes with one abstention. Thank you. So we'll get those posted. Report from the chair and committee members, I'll go first. So Lori and I joined the select board meeting last night for, it seemed like forever. You think our meetings are long. Holy smokes. But it was nice to be part of their conversation, and if you didn't have a chance to watch it, they did express their gratitude, not just that we were willing to make such a difficult call, but their sympathies with the committee for some of the negativity that we saw over the weekend and their recognition that we are all volunteers and doing the very best that we can under a crazy, crazy time. So I'm glad that we, we had the opportunity to do that. Lori already mentioned that negotiations are ongoing over the return to school with the union, and I already reminded you to send your questions about reopening to Lori, and that's all I've got. Does anybody else have any committee member reports or requests or anything? Natalie?
Just very quickly, last week Andrea and I attended a meeting with, a building partnership meeting with the Wampanoag Education Program. It was insightful and full and of wonderful information and things that we didn't even know were opportunities. So I would love to see them added to a future agenda so we can all learn more about what they can offer.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other updates from anyone? John?
Just a, I was at the collaborative yesterday, and we're gearing up for the, for the new year as well. And in addition to that, sat in on a Zoom meeting with the folks at Mass Maritime and the ASLP program. And that proposed alternative program is moving forward, and they're making that work. And then just a note similar to what you had said, Kelly, that I had a high school senior, a couple of high school seniors, reach out to me and say that they were very enthusiastic about the, about the winter break possibility. And, and with all due respect to what Scott had said about planning that, you know, and like Mary had said, if we did ever, were involved with something like that, we would obviously practice social distancing. And, but it was neat to see that they had that sort of looking forward and kind of realizing things. And, and they were very kind of, had a good visual for the overall thing, which was very encouraging.
Thank you. Any other committee members? Bill?
Had an opportunity to watch the virtual graduation. I thought it was well done.
It was very impressive. I hope everybody had a chance to see it. It was not the same, but, and I love...
I understand that. Under the circumstances, everything went well.
And the posts all over Facebook of people standing next to their giant TVs with their picture paused, and it was very, you know, it was very small celebrations of people. Oh, John, sorry.
I almost, I almost forgot. I was going to do this at the rest of the meeting, and I was going to encourage anyone who has a mask handy to finish the meeting up with our masks on.
As much as I would like to stand up and walk away from this chair, I don't think anyone would appreciate me taking so long. Okay, with nothing else, I'm going to make a motion that we move into executive session to conduct strategy and preparations for union negotiations with non-union personnel, the superintendent. And it is anticipated that the school committee will not return to open session. So Lori, I'm not sure how this will work. Will I be able, are you going to join us and get the meeting started and then pass it to me? Perfect, I just want to make sure. All right, thank you, everyone. Thanks to all the members of the public who joined us tonight. And so you will log off from this, school committee members, and then, and then log into the executive session, session. And thanks to all of our staff people too.
You need a second, Kelly.
Oh my gosh, and we didn't vote. Good lordy. See, it's, I'm getting...
I'm going to second it.
Thank you, and then we'll roll call vote, as is so required. And we'll start with Lisa. Thank you.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinnoplis, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, so that's...
Kelly, where is that email?